Good morning, everyone. If you are online with us, would appreciate you turning on your camera and/or microphone, but we are convening our regular meeting of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District at 10:30 a.m. on Tuesday, May 11th. We are meeting via in-person video and teleconference with some of the board here in the Icent C Boardroom and their remainder of the board joining us by, again, video or teleconference. We are continuing to follow the governor's protocol for the COVID-19 pandemic crisis, and members of the public have been afforded the opportunity to either watch this livestreamed on our college website or listen to an audio version of the meeting by calling into a toll-free number. So with that, I'm going to call the role, Regent Adami.
Here.
Regent Everett?
Here.
Regent Bennett?
Here.
Regent Garza?
Here.
Regent Hutchison?
I'm here.
Regent Kelly?
Here.
Regent Turner, are you with us? We'll keep an eye out for her. She may be a few minutes late joining us. I'm Regent Scott. We do have a quorum and can conduct business, and I welcome those of you who are in the boardroom with me back. It is wonderful to see faces of both our fellow board members and staff. If you would join me, please, in a moment of silence. I have been leading this for the last few months, so I'm going to ask someone else to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Regent Adami, would you be willing to do that for us?
Absolutely. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And if you would please join me in reading the Delmar College Vision Statement. "Delmar College will be the premier choice for life-changing educational opportunities provided by responsive, innovative faculty and staff who empower students to improve local and global communities." As I mentioned, the college is streaming live audio and video from the official Board of Regents meeting in real time, with the exception of portions of the meeting as considered closed statute. The public has been afforded an opportunity to call in for public comment, and I understand we do not have any public comment for today's meeting. With that, the first item on our agenda is to go into closed session pursuant, so if you'll allow me to read this language, and then we'll have an opportunity for folks to sign off, so we just have the regents both in video and in closed session. We're going to go into closed session under Texas Government Code 551.071 regarding pending or contemplated litigation or settlement offer with possible discussion and action in open session and the seeking of legal advice from counsel on pending legal or contemplated matters or claims with possible discussion and action in open session. And Texas Government Code 551.071, excuse me, 074A1 regarding the appointment, employment evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer, employee, including, number one, the appointment to fill an at-large Regent vacancy, and, number two, the annual evaluation of the college president and president contract, and, three, annual board self-evaluation with possible discussion and action in open session. The time is 10:33 a.m., and we will have just a few-minute break while we clear the virtual room and the physical room. Thank you all. We have come out of closed session at 12:08 p.m. There is no action from closed session. We will now recess the board meeting, and we will reconvene for the continuation of our meeting promptly at 1:00 p.m. Good afternoon. It is 1:00 p.m., and we are going to reconvene our regular board meeting of the Delmar College Board of Regents. We met earlier this morning in closed session and are reconvening after lunch for that purpose of our regular agenda. As we start this afternoon's meeting, it is with great sorrow that we acknowledge the passing of Regent Hector Salinas. Coach, as we all knew him and affectionately called him, had been with us for a little over three years, and we certainly know that his love of Delmar College and his love of students overall really defined his life as a person, as a coach, as an elected official, and certainly as a father to a wonderful, wonderful family and to the patriarch of that family. The Board of Regents has prepared a resolution in his honor, and we are very pleased to have members of his family here with us today to hear the reading of that resolution and to let us express to the family our sincere condolences for his passing. I'm going to ask Mr. Rivera to read the resolution for us. We'll have an opportunity for each of the regents to express words to the family and express words of remembrance of Regent Salinas, and then we will ask his family to come forward and give us a few words as well. So with that, I'm going to ask Mr. Rivera to please read the draft resolution.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Regents, before you is a resolution for your consideration, which I'll now read. It's entitled "Resolution of the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District in Honor and Memory of Regent Hector Coach Salinas, 1945/2021." Whereas Hector Coach Salinas was elected as an at-large member of the Delmar College Board of Regents in November 2018, a board on which he honorably and dutifully served until April 30, 2021; whereas Regent Salinas attended and graduated from Mary Carroll High School, where he was a fierce competitor on the baseball and basketball teams and led the Carroll Tigers to their first district baseball championship and state tournament; whereas Regent Salinas continued his educational path at Pan American College, where he pursued and earned his bachelor's and master's degrees in education, and during which he met his beloved wife Thelma, with whom he would spend his life and have five wonderful children, ten grandchildren, and one great-granddaughter; whereas Regent Salinas moved his young family to Corpus Christi and started teaching and coaching in the local public schools and began a truly extraordinary coaching career that spanned more than 50 years and enabled him to blend his lifelong passions for baseball and teaching our youth; whereas Regent Salinas, as a head coach, inspired and led many winning teams through many championship seasons, including most notably at Foy H Moody High School, where the legendary Moody Magic was born, at Texas Southmost College and Laredo Junior College, and at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville and Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, where he started both the Havelina and Islander baseball programs; whereas Regent Salinas's outstanding accomplishments as a baseball coach and educator positively impacted the lives of countless students and athletes at the elementary, middle school, high school, community college, and university level throughout South Texas, from Corpus Christi to Laredo, from Brownsville to Kingsville; whereas Regent Salinas's genuine care and compassion for his students and athletes earned him the honorific and affectionate term of endearment, "Coach," a name by which he was known throughout his entire adult life; whereas Regent Salinas's illustrious career as a baseball coach led to his induction into the Leonajo Sports Hall of Fame, the Moody High School Hall of Fame, the Rio Grande Valley Hall of Fame, and the Tamuk Havelina Hall of Fame, as well as his being awarded the 10th Lifetime Achievement Award by South Texas Winter Baseball and recognized by the NC2A as Independent Coach of the Year; whereas Regent Salinas's heartfelt commitment to helping youth led him to take his talents and winning spirit to service as a trustee on the Board of the Corpus Christi Independent School District, to which he was elected in 2015; whereas that same devotion to public service and to helping the youth and adult learners of our community prompted Regent Salinas to seek a position on the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District, a position to which he was elected in November 2018; whereas Regent Salinas spent his entire life giving time and attention to the things that mattered most and made our community a better place; whereas the entire Delmar College family and the broader South Texas community lost a dedicated public servant and friend on April 30, 2021 with the sad passing of Regent Hector Coach Salinas. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Regents of the Delmar College District on this 11th day of May 2021 hereby recognizes and honors with deepest appreciation their colleague and friend, Regent Hector Coach Salinas, for his service and contributions to Delmar College, for his passionate and lifetime dedication to scholastic baseball and the youth of South Texas, for his efforts to expand access to quality education for all, and for his genuine care and compassion for the staff, faculty, and students at Delmar College, and together with many, many others mourns his passing and extends its sincerest condolences to his beloved family. Madam Chair, there are signature lines for each of the regents. If you so approve this resolution as well as for Dr. Eskamia.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rivera. Dr. Adami, do you make the motion to adopt that resolution as presented?
I do.
And I'm going to call on Mr. Bennett to second that motion. Mr. Bennett, would you like to second?
Absolutely.
Thank you so much, sir. Again, I would like to offer the opportunity, I'm going to go ahead and have us vote and then offer the opportunity for all regents to make a comment if you would so choose. If you are voting in favor of this resolution to honor Regent Salinas, would you please raise your hand? Thank you very much. That is a unanimous adoption of this resolution. So I'm just going to ask you to, calling you one at a time, open your mic, and I'm going to start with Dr. Adami, please.
You know, the legacy that Coach left, this is it. I mean, the resolution itself, you know, it doesn't completely cover the love this gentleman had for the community, the students, and education. Delmar has always been important to him. Five years ago, Coach approached me about establishing, re-establishing the baseball team here at Delmar College, and it has been an ongoing conversation. And you know, I tell you what, we will carry on that conversation to completion for Coach. It is important that Delmar continue with that legacy and to, in remembrance of individuals like Coach Salinas, other regents, Gabe, past Regent Gabe, you know, so it's a man that we will all truly miss.
Thank you very much. Susan?
Yes, I'd just like to also say what an honor it was just to serve with him on this board, and he was such an inspiration during this last year when so many people were having a difficult time and difficult time with meeting and doing their jobs. He showed up. He was there regardless of the obstacles that he was facing personally, and that meant a lot, just that he was there and that his attention was always on this college, and I'll remember that.
Thank you very much. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you. I did not know Coach Salinas very well, but you can't live in this community and not know of him. And I've just been appointed to this board, and one of my regrets is not having the opportunity to get to work with Coach and get to know him better. He clearly will be missed, and he was clearly loved.
Thank you very much. Mr. Garza?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First off, let me say that how blessed was Coach Salinas to be able to do the things that he did as well as he did him and be able to take his passion, the passion that he had to be able to help young people in life, in their life journey, first whether it be baseball, whether it be academics, I mean, but to be able to give them and put them on the right footing for them to be able to maximize the opportunities that were, that might be in front of them that they never realized might be there in order for them to get their education, and then for him to serve on the school board and then also on the Delmar Board of Regents. I was fortunate enough to meet Coach Hector Salinas in 1993. I was a senior at Miller High School. I was one of the big shots on campus. I wasn't an athlete by no means. I didn't play baseball, but he was my health teacher, and he was a coach to my brother on the sophomore football team, and he coached a lot of friends of mine, I said, coached on the baseball team. And the impact that he had among, with all the young people, I just, I can't, I can't even begin to articulate. Our lives intersected over the years, most recently, when I ran for city council, he was at one of my functions and encouraged all my friends and my supporters to work hard to get me elected. I know he came out of the hospital to come and serve and participate in the meeting. They put me on the Delmar Board of Regents, and I know that he worked hard to put me in this position. So just like so many people that I saw Saturday and that I've talked to over the last few days, I know that he's had a great impact on my life, and the things that people do in their community, so many of them can be attributed to the encouragement that Coach Salinas had on us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garza. Dr. Turner?
Yes, I'm really sorry that I never had a chance to serve as Coach. I do wish all the best for his family and just pray for healing and know that he was very loved by his community.
Thank you very much. Ms. Everett?
You know, we've had quite a bit of loss this past year, many of us personally and certainly as a group at Delmar, and this one really hurts, you know? In addition to all of Coach's professional and community achievements, he was just a really nice, decent man, and I'm so grateful that I did get a chance to serve with him and sit next to him, and he always greeted me with a smile and just had a really great attitude about life and this community, and he certainly will be missed, and my thoughts go out to his family as well.
Thank you. And I saved Mr. Bennett for last because I know that they had a special friendship and relationship, and so Regent Bennett would like you to bring us home.
I only had the honor of knowing Coach for a couple of years, but I can tell you, it was an absolutely true honor. He and I would drive back and forth to the meetings. When we went out of state to conferences, we'd go to the same seminars. Coach always had the most positive attitude that I've ever seen for a man that was going through extreme difficulties sometimes, but he never focused on that. He focused on the students. His job was to take care of the students, take care of the little people at the colleges that couldn't speak up for themselves. That man, he was selfless, just an incredible person. Now, I've read probably a thousand of the comments on Facebook about Coach, and I had some deep, very positive feelings about him, but apparently I share that with so many other people in the Coastal Band, and I'm thinking not only his players, not only the other coaches, but his opposing team members had that kind of respect for that man. It's just something you don't often see, actually, you seldom see it. And in addition to that, the man was absolutely proud of his family, as well he should be, but you couldn't go anywhere without hearing about his family and their accomplishments. And that was rightful pride. He deserved to be proud of that. He worked his way up from absolute poverty to being well-known, respected throughout probably the entire stage, if not further than that. But what a wonderful man. I'm going to miss him. We're going to miss him. He was a great asset to Delmar, a great asset to all the students of the Coastal Band. We're going to miss you, Coach.
Thank you, Regent Bennett. I would like to offer Dr. Eskamia the opportunity to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Madam Chair. To Mrs. Salinas, who's here, his daughter Brenda, Brenda, Paula, Orlando, if you'd like to come up to the podium, please, we're going to have some opportunity for you all to share some remarks, but as you all are coming up, I'll meet you up there in just a second. I just, I want to tell you what an honor it was to speak at the services on Saturday and to have been a part of that, representing this institution that Coach Salinas loves so much. And part of my remarks were framed around the philosophy of the community college, and I'm not going to go back into it, but I use that to frame the discussion and then really use it as a parallel for Coach's dedication to education and his personality. It's all about affordability. It's all about access. It's all about close to home. Those are the three primary pillars of any community college, and that's all, that's what Coach, that's what Coach was about. He was all about access and opportunities and affordability. If you've been in these meetings, you know that access and affordability were near and dear to his heart. And of course, close to home, everything is local, and he lived a very, very local life, and I, so much, that resonates with me so much. It's about giving to as much as you can to your community, and that's what he was all about. But anyway, he's going to be near and dear missed. My family were calling from all over. He's been friends with my dad and my brothers for decades, as they're all into the baseball world. One funny, quick thing, when I met, when I re-engaged Coach, when he came on the board, he said, "I don't remember you playing baseball." I said, "Yes, sir. You're exactly right. Let's just leave it, let's just leave it at that." He goes, "Oh, yeah, you're not the baseball player. Okay." He goes, "Well, you figured it out. You've made something of yourself." "Yes, sir, I did. I tried to. I'm still trying, sir." But he goes, "You'll be okay," he said, and I appreciate that because I feel like we are going to be okay with Coach's spirit still with us. That being said, Orlando, Mrs. Salinas, Brenda, Paula, would you come up to the microphone? We'd like to hear from you, and I'm going to meet you up there with the parting, with the gift and some parting words. Please, go ahead, Orlando.
Thank you for having us. First of all, I want to thank the Delmar Board of Regents for your thoughts and your prayers for my dad. That means so much to our family. My dad, Delmar was very, very special to his heart, and Delmar signified community, opportunity, and a beginning. That was what he, when he talked about Delmar, it was about, it was about all of that in one, and he took this job very serious. And the one thing that was always dear to his heart was helping people, and he felt that Delmar, because it's a community college, that this was the first step in a lot of, really, kids from the, from the body, kids that they didn't have opportunity or didn't see a way to get an education, that this is their first step, and he would use sports so that he could get these kids from the body to get an education, and so he was real adamant about what he wanted to do here at Delmar, and you guys know that, and he was trying to bring in sports so that it can give more people an opportunity to get their foot in the right direction, really. And so I always tell people, I said, "I know you guys know him as Coach, the baseball coach, but he was more than that to us. He was, he was a life coach, and he taught people that never let anybody tell you, you can't. If you want something, you can have it. Some people just need to work a little bit harder." And he said, "And if you need me to help you, I can help you." And he was, his phone was ringing off the hook 24/7. It was, it was just unbelievable, like, we witnessed him. He didn't sleep. All he did was think about ways that he could help people. I was telling a few of you guys that when he was in the hospital, really, really sick, we didn't realize that he was helping a young girl who had gotten 90% burned, her body, and he had got ahold of the family, and he was setting up a GoFundMe page, a plastic surgeon to work with, to do the improvements on that little girl for free. He was really worried about Janelle, Ed's wife. He was like, "How's she doing?" He was real worried about my best friend's dad, who just passed away yesterday, Mr. Mauro Luna, and he was always like, "How's he doing?" And here's my dad on his deathbed and worrying about everybody. And that, that was my dad. And I don't know if you guys heard about it or maybe saw some pictures, but his, his goal, well, his, not his goal, but he told us when he passed, he wanted to go by places that really meant a lot to him. And he told me that personally when I was in the hospital, and so I told my mom, I said, "Mom, he wants to go by A&amp;M Corpus, he wants to go by Hook Stadium, he wants to go by Delmar, he wants to go by Westside, he wants to go by the Boys Club, Moody High School, Champion Park, Cabinist Field," and she said, "Are you crazy?" And I said, "No. Dad wanted to do that." And she goes, "You know that's very untraditional, right?" And I go, "Everything that we're going to do and celebrate in his life is going to be very untraditional because my dad didn't follow tradition. He went and did and made his own path." And so we, so on Friday, the Hurst driver told me, whispered in my ear, and he goes, "Hey, you want to ride in the passenger seat?" And I went, "Yeah, I want to go with my dad, one more last ride." And he goes, "Let's go." And so we went with my family. I was with my dad. My family was behind us, and we went, first stop, Delmar College. So we parked right here, took pictures, and I was looking at them like, "Who does that? Who, who does that?" And then we got in the car, and we went to the Boys Club, where he grew up, took a picture right there, and it was beautiful. Drove by Westside, people were parked along the side honking at us. Go to Moody High School Park there. And I mean, we went and did, he was going home, and on his way home, he stopped at Delmar College. So that lets the community, all of you, you know, Delmar, the students, understand how serious he took his job. It was special. And so when we go to, who's going to replace Hector Salinas, my dad, I would like for you guys to think about the standard that he wanted. First of all, you better love Delmar College. Number two, you better love your community. Number three, you better be about helping people. This is not, for him, it was not a stepping stone, come to Delmar College and use it to go and get, you know, use it as a stepping stone. If you don't have those qualities, he didn't want you on this board. He didn't want to help you get here. So lastly, I mean, when you make that decision, ask yourself, you know, if you were in my dad's position, would you, one, ask Mr. Dr. Eskamia? He told me, "I need him at my funeral. I want him to talk. That's my guy." And he spoke at his funeral. Number two, I want to bring, on my way to heaven, I want to stop at Delmar. I know you won't find anybody like that, but get somebody very close that really cares about the community in Delmar and wants to make a difference in young kids' lives. Again, thank you for praying for my dad, for being confidants, for being friends. Ed, you're very, you're very special to him. Thank you.
Well, he did real good. Now, he left me with tears, too. But it's true, Ed was extremely special to him because I think they shared a lot of the same concerns, and he respected him as a finance guy, and so Ed, yes, you were very special to my husband and to all the family. And with that said, also hoping and praying that your wife will do fine and everything will be okay. Again, I just want to, excuse me, reiterate what my son said, which is that this was not just a political thing for him, you know, "I'm part of the Board of Regents," you know, big, big thing, which it was. However, he just felt like, "Okay, I'm right in the middle of this. I can make an impact. I can." And he had such respect for each member because he could see all of what you brought to the table. And I was telling Ms. President, I said, "You know, he had a lot of regard for your leadership, and of course, that was a chance..." leadership and of course, that was a chance for me to say, well, of course, she's, she's a woman. But, but yes, he had regard for everybody and he just felt like he was in a place surrounded by people that had many, many different talents and skills and he was just absorbing every bit of it. Like he would say, well, I don't know too much about the finance, you know, all of the little nitty gritty of financing, but he would just, Ed, you know, we're talking about this and he, you know, they'd start, you know, this long conversation about finance. And all because he felt like, okay, I just need to know, what are the considerations that all the board has to consider before a decision is made? And he wanted to be fair and democratic and, but of course, you know, he was relentless. And if he could have, he probably would have been born with two horns in the front where he would just go straight ahead and just do it, like be a, be a UT Longhorn. But he was relentless and again, it was all because he just felt, I really feel like it was a calling in his life that whatever he did, it needed to serve a purpose. It needed to serve someone that he would see in the street and would think, why aren't they getting opportunities like my children or like your children? And so that's where he would always focus on that. And so I just wanted to thank you so much for making him feel so welcome with all of you. Y'all were wonderful professionals and he just felt honored to be able to serve alongside you all and at the same time, learn from you and then also bring in his ideas and things that he, he really cared about. So thank you very much for all your prayers also and for all your support and we love Delmar. I mean, I just think it's the best thing in the community. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us today. And Dr. Escamilla has a special presentation for you.
Oh my goodness. Oh my goodness.
On behalf of the college, this is a portrait of Regent Salinas that was held in the hallway in the highest regard, the highest esteem. So we present this to you. We also will have a proclamation, the resolution, the day once it's signed and praying in the court as well for the day we want to present.
It's beautiful. And I would have to look at this because I'm not accustomed to seeing him all decked out like that. But I will look and I say, well, now I know why I'm married and he is.
There we go.
Very handsome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. So Dr. Escamilla presented the family with the portrait of Mr. Salinas that hung in outside the ISEC boardroom, his official Delmar College portrait, and informed the family that we would be presenting them with a framed copy of the resolution once it is signed and executed. So that will be delivered to the family as well. Thank you again for being here. We appreciate it so, so very much. Regents, we will continue on with our regular agenda, including the opportunity to recognize some of our outstanding faculty and staff. We'll begin our recognitions today. Ms. Tammy McDonald is going to be with us to present recognitions for Ms. Rachel Benavides, who is our Director of Adult Education, and Dr. Leonard Rivera, Dean of Continuing Education. Ms. Tammy McDonald.
Thank you, Chair. Almost forgot how to do this. Thank you.
It's wonderful to see you in person.
Yes, everyone's, it's great to see everyone. I believe that we do have, our honorees are joining us virtually. So it's on the green. Can you, can you, okay. Yeah, can, I'll speak a little bit louder. Thank you. Dr. Leonard Rivera and Ms. Rachel Benavides were issued a letter of commendation and it was presented to them by Judge Joe Benavides. The letter of commendation was presented for their generous support during the Justice Courts Precinct 1 Place 1 2021 Retreat and Workshop. Ms. Benavides and Dr. Leonard Rivera had showed superior performance, self-dedication, and professional knowledge presented to the staff, which is invaluable. They also were instrumental in ensuring that the staff was up to date on information with programs and classes that are intended to assist at-risk population through GED and other course opportunities offered through Delmar College. Their personal initiative and unwavering devotion are reflected upon them and Delmar College. So it is my pleasure to present Ms. Rachel Benavides and Dr. Leonard Rivera. So we'll see if Ms. Benavides, if you'd like to say if you would first, and then we'll have Dr. Rivera. Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's my pleasure and honor to receive this recognition. As a GED graduate myself, I feel strongly about helping and supporting my fellow neighbors and friends who share this great community with me. It's important that our at-risk populations know and understand that college is equally accessible to them as well. Delmar College and the Adult Education Team strive to make post-secondary education opportunities available to everyone and it's my honor to ensure that all these students understand and know that this is available to them. It's truly a humbling experience to be able to impact their lives through the good work of our college and I thank you very much.
Dr. Rivera?
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Leonard Rivetta. And again, thank you so much for the kind comments of Ms. McDonald. And I feel really humbled by the fact that this is something that we do every day, 365 days a year. And so to be recognized is humbling, but at the same time, it's something that we do every day. And I just want to thank Dr. Escamilla, the board, Ms. Keys, and of course, Rachel, who leads a great team in her Adult Education Leadership Group. And also to extend thanks to my entire Continuing Education Division for their utmost dedication to ensuring that each of these individuals that we serve are certainly going to be provided the best that Delmar has to offer. Thank you so much.
Thank you both. And on behalf of the board, congratulations and we thank, we thank the justice of the peace, Mr. Benavides, for his recognition of the program and we thank you for all that you do. Continuing on, Ms. McDonald.
Yes, thank you. It's my pleasure to recognize Dr. Natalie Villarreal, our Executive Director of Government and Board Relations. Dr. Villarreal has been selected to participate in the National Community College Hispanic Council Leadership Fellows Program. This program provides vital leadership training and it is established so that it will also help you enhance your leadership skills and abilities. So Dr. Villarreal, congratulations. Would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, Ms. McDonald. I just want to say thank you for this opportunity. I work at a fabulous institution that gives the opportunity to do things like this and there are several other colleagues here at the college who've gone through the program. So I'm just honored to be part of it this year. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dr. Villarreal.
Thank you.
And now we're going to hear from Dr. Christina Wilson to recognize one of her staff members. Welcome back in person.
Thank you. Nice to see you in person. Good afternoon. I'm very pleased to recognize Mr. Newman Wong, Research Associate in our Office of Institutional Research. Newman was recently selected to serve as a Texas Success Center Community College Research Fellow. The Texas Success Center leads the Texas Pathway Strategy in building capacity in community colleges to design and implement structured academic and career pathways for all students. Delmar College has been active in the Texas Pathways for the past five years. Research Fellows will conduct research studies to, one, build the knowledge base concerning Texas Pathways reform efforts, enhance the impact, two, enhance the impact of community colleges' reform efforts, three, increase capacities of community college-focused researchers and policymakers. Selected Fellows will also benefit from professional development and mentoring guidance related to their intended career trajectory. Newman's term as a Research Fellow began last month and will continue through August 2022. We are very proud of his selection for this prestigious program and look forward, look forward to learning from his research. Newman, if you're here with us virtually, would you like to say a few words?
Don't see his camera on. All right, well, please pass on our congratulations to him. For the newer Regents, the Texas Success Center is that third arm of part of the Texas Association of Community Colleges, the Community College Association of Texas Trustees, and the Texas Success Center. Those three, while separate entities, they are sister organizations that are all housed with the Texas Association of Community Colleges. And this one focuses on, as Dr. Wilson said, the the Pathways Program, but they also have a Board of Trustees training as well. And that Board of Trustees Institute is the one that is being combined with our annual conference in September. So the trustees portion of the Texas Success Center work is happening this September in Austin, combined with the CAT Annual Conference. So just wanted to, to help provide a little bit of context of who some of these players are. You'll get to learn this, this terminology as we go and, and for some of us even that have been, been here for a while, it's sometimes helpful to have that reminder. Thank you, Dr. Wilson. As we move on, we'll have our regular student success report from Dr. Rita Silva and Ms. Patricia Benavides Dominguez. And so Dr. Silva, is this your last time with us?
Yes, Madam Regents, this is my last Board Regents meeting.
What if we, what if we refuse to let you go? Is there, is there a board action to?
I think there are laws against that, actually.
It is. So it's a little bit difficult.
Dr. Hussey will call you.
There we go. There we go. Well, before you get started, I wanted to say thank you for your service to Delmar College. You've been, South Texas, I know, is in your blood and you have served in a variety of capacities, both as a volunteer and as a professional in South Texas. And we look forward to a continuing robust relationship with you at Texas A&amp;M Kingsville. And I know you're, you and I are both proud of that alma mater and I know you're going to do great work over there. So thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to take this opportunity, also thank the Board of Regents for your continued support and of course, Dr. Escamilla, the exec team and all faculty and staff. It's actually very difficult to leave, but I do look forward to going back to alma mater and, and look forward to that chapter. But I cannot tell you the, the valuable lessons I've learned from everybody here. I've told Dr. Escamilla over and over again, it's been a great learning opportunity. I love working here. You have the best staff and, and faculty here and the students are remarkable. So I won't take up any much more time, but thank you, Madam Chair, for that. Onto our student success points. So Board of Regents and Dr. Escamilla and Madam Chair, at last month's board meeting during the enrollment report, we discussed how Delmar College leverages the work of the Continuing Education Department to help with the college's contact hours. Thus, we thought it would be appropriate to highlight one of the many successful continuing education programs. I will now turn it over to Associate Vice President Patricia Benavides Dominguez to talk about one of these programs, which is the Patient Care Technician Program.
Thank you, Dr. Silva. Good afternoon. Second slide, please. As you can see on this slide, the first year in 2018, 2019 of the Patient Care Technician Program, 100% of the students passed their licensure exam. In 2019, 2020, 91% of the students passed the licensure exam. This, this is in comparison to the national average of a 76% passing rate. The Patient Care Technician Program is relatively new CE program, but is one of the fastest growing. The program is a semester-long and students sit for this licensure test at the end of the program. The Patient Care Technology Program incorporates the skills and knowledge of a blodotomist, EKG technician, a nurse's aide. PCTs have daily hands-on experiences with patients by helping them with their procedures such and tasks such as taking vital signs, performing EKGs, blood draws, hemodialysis, and other supportive skills for both nurses and doctors. The students in the Patient Care Technician Program work at hospitals, rehabilitation centers, dialysis facilities, doctors' offices, home health agencies, and nursing homes. The pay, the average pay of this, of a patient care technician is $16 per hour. The next slide, please. This slide, this slide shows a comparison between DMC Patient Care Technician students and the national average passing rate. As you can see, the patient care students at Delmar surpass the national average. This is a testament to the great job Dr. Leonard Rivetta and the CE staff has done. We thank Dr. Leonard Rivera and his staff for the information and congratulate him on and his instructors for setting a very high bar of excellence in this and all CE programs. CE does wonderful work in actively promoting this program in the community and with the school districts. Many students that get their start, they get their academic, start their academic journey with PCT eventually continue on and apply to our selective programs of study such as nursing, radiology, and dental hygiene. Dr. Rivetta is here remotely in case we have any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there questions from the board? Thank you again for this. Thank you. Best wishes. Godspeed.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thank you.
Now we will hear from Dr. Escamilla, his college president's report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The report on the PCT program is one of my favorite, most exciting, newest programs of the newest programs that is just proliferating throughout the community. And I just wanted to add, the more, anytime a college can add to the general health and welfare of its community, the better off we all are. I know that sounds like common sense, but, but the, the numbers that we're achieving, not just in the way of outcomes, but just the volume of numbers of students have gone through that I've seen them, personal, family, and friends go through this program, do extremely well, go off to pre-med degrees that are pre-nursing degrees and the like. And, and to be able to make $16 an hour as a, as a young person coming out of high school, going into college, think of that, think of the opportunities to sustain, sustain themselves. It's just a wonderful thing. I just had to add that. But thank you, Madam Chair and Regents. It's my pleasure to, to give you my monthly update as it relates to, to, to my report and basically the state of the college for, for the month, if you will. We're currently in the latter half of Phase 2, the Return to Campus Plan. And I, and I say that with a, with a note of caution. We, we, we are at a different stage certainly than we were earlier this spring and certainly in the fall. What's different now is, is the, is the increased number of vaccines, vaccinations, and those sorts of things that are, that are improving, again, the overall health and welfare of the, of the community by way of, of reduced number of, of infections. We say that and we, I want you all to know that we remain absolutely vigilant. We take nothing for granted. It is a day-to-day scenario and we watch it as such. And we are, we are careful to be, to, to know about changes throughout infection rates and those sorts of things because we know that hotspots still exist all over the country, all over the world. I was just on a phone earlier with some friends of mine that have some very close contacts in India, for instance, and other countries like that. And so it's still a very, very dire straits in certain areas. We're very fortunate and we're very vigilant is the point with all of that. Health and safety protocols will, will remain in, in effect as they really always have, but for, for the foreseeable future, for sure. Again, we're in a transitional period where employees with private offices or workspace are adhering to social distancing and encouraging them. We're slowly encouraging those that have, that have, have taken the proper protocols and procedures and who have, who, who are, have received immunizations and those sorts of things to be, again, to slowly come back, slowly come back to work as they can. Again, we still see the next four, six, eight weeks as a, as a, still kind of in the peak period of, of the proliferation of the vaccinations. And so that's basically where we are. Summer will look very different. Again, I don't want to talk about summer until summer gets here, but, but we are looking forward, making plans and, and are prepared to adjust. We think that fall will be the most like a normal situation, all things considered. But I think even then, there will be a, there will be serious considerations for exceptions and those kinds of things. I don't, I don't want to speculate any more than that, other than we are preparing to come back to as normal set of circumstances as we can in the fall. Switching gears, I wanted to share with you all, as you all have seen in my, in my president's report to you all in the state of the college. in the state of the college over the past several years, one of the items that remains at the top of my priority list is our ERP, is our Enterprise Resource Planning System. It is the brain, it is the central nervous of the system. And Regent Kelly, it's a conversion, as you've probably heard of at other places. It's, anytime we're swapping out the nervous system of the college, it's a very, very critical piece of our processes. Now, I want you all to know that I took a trip to Anthology is the umbrella, the parent company of our ERP. And I went to Boca Raton, Florida, to meet with the staff, the leadership, including the CEO, Jim Milton, as well as Jim Brigadier, their chief executive officer out there. I met with the entire executive team. Why? Because it's the president's responsibility to do those kinds of things. I would have done this last year or even the year before. But I went to give them an update and to give them my input as to where I think we are with the conversion. We're still about 12 months out. It got pushed out about six months because of COVID, but we're still about 12 to 14 months out for full completion, full conversion. And I went over there to explain where we are and then to ask and to make sure, to seek assurance that as we move ahead, that we're moving together in lockstep with their organization. That's part of the president's responsibilities with this kind of undertaking. And so I want you all to know that we were, I was, I was by myself, but I was well-received and given great assurance directly from the CEO and the chief executive officer, excuse me, the, Jim Brigadier is basically their number two, and their executive team, that we are moving ahead in good stead and that they are watching us very closely. Just as a reminder, we are the first in Texas to have gone to full implementation with what is formerly known as Campus Management. But the Anthology Group, again, is behind us. And I'm glad that I finally made that trip after about a year and a half delay. Finally, on a much, much lighter note, spring virtual commencement will be Friday, May 14th at 7:00 PM. We think this will be our, we think, okay, I qualify these things. We think this will be the last virtual graduation. We won't have a summer graduation, per se. We will have a conferring, well, I'll get to that in a little bit. But anyway, we think this will be the last virtual graduation. I want you all to know that 828 students have applied for graduation. There was 988 prospective so far. There's 828. That number can grow and shrink, as we all know. But that's a big number of students that are going forth, despite all these efforts, despite all the things that have been going on because of the impact of COVID. The students are doing well. The faculty are doing extremely well. And so I just want to remind everybody, you can go on YouTube and various other forms of social media, and they'll be pushed out to everybody so that you can enjoy it. It's one of my relaxing things to do at 7:00 in the evening on a Friday to just kind of sit around. And I usually just sit on the couch and just enjoy it. It's very different. I think it'll be the last time that happens, if everything continues as we're hoping. Madam Chair, that concludes my report. I'm glad to answer any questions.
Thank you. Is there any follow-up questions or comments for Dr. Eskamia? Yes, Mr. Garza.
Doctors, as far as the, I guess, the change in the ERP system, is the whole staff involved in that change? Or is that just separate departments?
No, no, this is a college-wide effort. This is absolutely a college-wide effort. And it goes back several years when we picked it up. Just the way we, the college chose the select of the ERP and selected the ERP, the college is into the conversion and in the nuts and bolts. I'm getting a head nod back there by our Associate Vice President Patricia Dominguez. It is a college-wide effort. It doesn't work unless the people own it and own the processes, create the processes, learn the processes, fine-tune the processes, and implement those new processes. We have to be careful not to put new wine in old bags, as the adage goes. We are being very careful with that to ensure that our employees are very much involved.
Is there a date as to when you plan to switch?
Yeah, so.
Is there a switch involved?
So we've already gone forth with the CRM, which is the Community Relations piece, which is the outreach piece. We're currently in student, we're in midstream with the student component of it all. After that will be HR and finance on the backend. So system, segments of the system will light up as we go. All segments of the systems will be fully implemented about next summer is when we think, that's the 12 to 14 months out that we're at right now, for full completion. We'll give you, we're going to come back and give a full update on that as we go ahead. And so you can count on a regular report on that implementation, which is so critical.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
If you'll make a note and have Natalie or whenever you have that planned to the pending list, so we can see when that's going to come back up.
Absolutely. I think the, I think once student goes live would be a really good time, once we're through there. And so we're about halfway done with that. So it'll be sometime early fall, I think.
Okay, great.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Eskamia? Thank you. We're going to call on Ms. Everett to give us a report on the Ad hoc Bylaws Committee.
Thank you. Our committee has been busy. We've already met three times since we formed the committee. And I want to thank Dr. Turner and Regent Hutchinson for joining me in that work and give a special thanks as well to Mr. Rivera and also Ms. Sanchez on staff, who have helped us tremendously. We are moving ahead as planned. We've already reviewed a number of other colleges' bylaws and ethics codes and policies and gone through those and started to compare them to our own. At our next meeting next week, we will start to dive into the Weaver recommendations to see how they fit with what we've been discussing. And our goal right now is to meet about every other week and get to the board some recommendations by our August meeting so that you all, we can then consider them and potentially vote on anything we may want to change at our September meeting. Right now, we think we can probably make that timeline. And if anything changes, certainly, I will let you all know. But I appreciate certainly Dr. Turner and Regent Hutchinson's just attention. There's, we've had some homework, and we've all been good students in getting through the homework, and our meetings have been very productive so far.
Thank you very much for that report. Are there any questions for Regent Everett? Thank you. And on behalf of the board, thank you to all three of you for that work on the Ad hoc Committee. We appreciate it. Moving on to staff reports, we will get a legislative update. We had a, I guess this will be an occurrence this meeting and next as things are wrapping up with the legislature to hear how the fast-moving train is going.
Yes, it is heating up. Next slide, please. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Dr. Eskamia and Regents. I'd like to start with an update today on the current bills that are being prioritized by the 50 community colleges with TAC, CAT, and TCC TA. Also discuss briefly the federal appropriations and special session. Next slide, please. So the number-one priority for our state legislature is the budget. And so HB 1 and SB 1 have successfully passed in both houses. However, what's happened in the higher education appropriations is that both of the sides do not match in how they have chosen to budget. So what does that mean for us? So what happens is the legislature does set up a separate committee, which is called the Conference Committee. And they both, you have five members from the Senate, five from the House, who meet together and who are going to focus on getting the budget complete and equal on both sides to move forward. So that is where we are at right now. That is being led by Senator Jane Nelson, who is the Finance Chair for the Senate. And then we have the House Appropriations Chair, Dr. Greg Bonin. So they are currently meeting these next few weeks to work on that. The TAC team, along with our CEOs, are currently meeting with those legislators and their staff members to really advocate for the appropriations that reimburse colleges for having successful students on the academic side of the House, but also on the continuing education side. So by our next board meeting, that will all be conferred. So I will continue to keep you up to date on that before June. Next slide, please. The second priority that we have been talking to you about is the TRU initiative. That has been SB 1102, which was actually authored by the Chairman of Higher Education in the Senate, Senator Creighton. The goal of the TRU initiative is to create a grant program for community colleges to work with business partners to rapidly provide short-term credentials to get our displaced and underemployed employees back into the workforce. And if you remember, the ask was for about $50 million for the next biennium. So the good news is that the TRU bill has passed the Senate, but we are currently waiting for it to pass in the House. So these next, well, actually, the next week and a half is going to be critical for this bill. We are hearing some positive feedback that there shouldn't be any issues. However, it still has not gotten to that stage. So that bill, again, we will let you know in the next couple of weeks what happens with that bill. Dr. Eskamia, did you want to add anything on that? Okay. So because we're hearing such positive feedback, TAC and CAT staff members are currently putting together a committee of CEOs, trustees, and our TCC TA organization to really get together and start providing a backbone so that when the committee is formed, there will already be some recommendations for these committee members. And so that's also actually being put together with a strategy team, HCM strategists, that is going to be helping that committee. So stay tuned on that. Next slide, please. The last major priority that the three organizations have been focusing on is the Texas Commission on Community College Finance. Now, this bill, if you remember from the last legislative discussion, is really to establish a commission that's going to look at state formula funding for our public junior colleges in the state, which hasn't really been looked at since the 1970s. So the good news is that this bill has passed through the Senate. It passed through the Senate at the end of April. And it's also passed through the House just this week on this, actually, on Friday, on the 7th. So now it goes to the governor's desk. So this bill, out of all of our three priorities, is probably one that's furthest along. So we're really excited about that. TAC and CAT have been meeting with the governor's office. The governor is very positive about this commission, is excited to move it along. However, he did have some recommendations that he asked that be put in the language as we continue with this process. So for example, he added the language that this commission can also look at reviewing taxing districts and service areas, also can look at the alignment of credentials and labor demands. So really, when this commission started off as just looking at the finances, the governor is really now asking that it look holistically at all things that are involved with our public two-year colleges. Does anybody have any questions on that?
I do. So they're going to be looking at, like, changing our service area, expanding, contracting? What does that mean?
Yes, so this commission would have the ability to receive that information, which is part of what the TAC and CAT group committee is getting together with the analyst as well, so that they can provide policy and data information to this group, because they are going to be in charge of looking at a lot of different areas.
So they'd have the authority to change it?
No.
No.
This would be a recommend, a committee that recommends, a commission, I'm sorry.
All right.
So it's a commission made up of a couple of House members, a couple of Senate members, several community college representatives, and some business leaders, much like the public school finance a couple of years ago. They came up with recommendations to the legislature, and the legislature then reconfigured the public school finance system. And so we're looking at, there's a similar kind of process, we hope, that this commission would make recommendations to the legislature in 2023 for potential changes to that state formula funding. And the governor asked that we give them an additional tasks to take on if they so choose, which would be around the taxing area and service district discussion.
So they're looking at everything, then?
Potentially.
Yeah, okay.
And so just to give you an idea, who would be on this commission? The lieutenant governor does get to choose two members from the Senate and also either a college CEO, a business leader, or an external stakeholder in the state. And then on the House side, the Speaker also would get to choose two committee members from the House to serve on the commission as long as, as well as with an administrator from one of the colleges. And then we would also have faculty representation from TCC TA.
I'd just like to add, on the finance side, one of the previous, the commission's going to be an awesome undertaking. So it's, I think it's the beginning of some badly-needed movement on the overall finance piece. But going back to the specifics on the funding appropriation side, what we're finding right now is that we've received, it's not fully developed yet, but we're receiving good favor, at least from the House side. I forget if it's House, I forget what, both sides. But anyway, we're at the 95% hold harmless level across the board. And that's a big, big deal for appropriations right now, especially since during the current base year, the current fiscal year, that we were not reduced by 5%, like all other state agencies were. So between that, I'm just speaking for Delmar College, between not being cut to 5% and then being held at the 95% hold harmless for finance so far, we are doing, relatively speaking, better than most. And so since we are less than 5% down from the contact hour perspective, we are going to be faring really well with that scenario. Again, we're pushing, we believe that hold harmless is a term that's synonymous with 100%. That's never been the case, but we continue to push for 100% true hold harmless in the session.
And so now moving on to federal appropriations, we still have not taken that money into account. The state has received some federal dollars for higher education. However, that money has yet to be allocated. And what we are hearing right now is that currently that money will look to be allocated after the session. So again, there is more money to come. We just don't know when and how.
Okay, and the goal is free two-year education for anybody?
So that's next, yes.
Jumping ahead, okay.
That would actually be a separate allocation of money that we're talking about. So this specifically, the state, again, is receiving appropriations specifically from the feds regarding higher education to allocate, so.
Yep.
Stay tuned on that as well.
It's an old model, coming back, really. Because back in the heyday of the growth of the community college movement, back in the 60s and 70s, and even today, there were many more states that offered no cost to local taxpaying citizens. It still exists in Tennessee and I think a couple of other areas in the country. I have mixed feelings about all of it, because of the devil's in the details, as we all know. But we've watched this one closely some years ago, and it seems that the Biden administration is taking it, taking a very serious run at this possibility, as it's one of its policy pieces.
So I'll close on the state level with special session. What we do know right now is it does not look like the legislature will go into special session in the summer. However, they are discussing a special session in the fall, specifically to discuss redistricting and start working on those lines. They're scheduled to receive census data in June. So that's what we are hearing as of today. It's possible that it could change. And so again, we will continue to keep you posted before the next board meeting, because things are moving fairly quickly.
Just a reminder that our local state representative, Todd Hunter, chairman, is chairman of that committee.
I have a question about the resolution that passes to authorize, to require that the legislature authorize the spending of the federal stimulus dollars coming through the state as opposed to letting the governor, and I guess maybe LBB, do that. Is that signed? And I apologize, I should know this, but I'm curious.
Is that signed, and I apologize, I should know this, but I'm curious to that, what you've heard about that process? Is that bill signed, and when are they, are they going to come back in special session to allocate those stimulus dollars?
I have not heard special session, there was a special committee that was formed.
Is that what it is?
To look at those appropriations, but it does not look like it will go into special session.
Okay.
So much of what's happening is happening as we speak right now, and they're working through the weekends. This is the time where they're going to be working seven days a week to get through a lot of these things, and I think that committee's one of those, so we'll circle back with that for you.
And does that withhold or put any sort of delay on our direct appropriations under the HERF portion? Or is that, would those be additional state dollars potentially? I'm just, I'm curious as to how that impacts our HERF dollars.
No, we think it's the latter.
Okay.
And so the HERF dollars are direct between the federal government and us. It would be whatever the state decides with that, if there's a delay or anything, it would be on that backend.
Then we'll go ahead and move on to the federal side. So looking at the 117th National Congress, Regent Kelly, what you were referring to is the American Family Plan. So in March, President Biden signed the American Rescue Plan. And then in April, they unveiled the American Families Plan. Now, that plan includes a whole new set of appropriations for higher education, along with the rest of the country. 109 billion is reserved for the two-year free community college movement. Now, that's, yes, ma'am?
Next slide, please.
Oh, sorry, next slide, please. Thank you. And so in 2010, then President Obama and Dr. Jill Biden convened the Higher Education Symposium for Community Colleges, where they began that discussion of the free two-year community college and junior college movement. And over the years, there had been some momentum, and then it did take a backseat to really focus more on internships and also workforce development. Now, with President Biden at the helm, it is starting to gain momentum again. And again, the 109 billion for two years. He's also asking for over $80 billion in Pell Grants, which is an increase, which was focused on getting students with the certificates, two-years and four-year degrees, more opportunities to receive the Pell Grant. Also asking for 62 billion to invest in evidence-based strategies to strengthen completion and retention rates at community colleges. Also adding extra appropriations for colleges that are deemed as minority-serving institutions, tribal colleges and universities, and historically black colleges and universities as well. So there is quite a bit of money that is being looked at to allocate in higher ed, in various ways to support many of our students that are out there right now. He's also calling to add in money for our teachers in high school to ensure that those students are college-ready once they are graduating. So these costs would, I'm sorry, these allocations would be appropriated over the next eight years if this were to pass. So as you continue receiving information from your national organization, ACCT, you're going to start hearing a lot about this, you're going to start hearing webinars, and I'm sure when you go to your national conference in San Diego in the fall, there will be quite a few conference meetings about it. It's probably going to be part of the overall mission of that conference, if you're able to attend. There are some states that are already offering free community college. So if you're out there, you know, on the internet, and you feel like looking it up, some examples are Arkansas, they offer the Arkansas Future Grant. California has had that set up for many years now, under the California Promise Program, as well as Delaware, Hawaii, and several other states who have been, have been using that model effectively. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Villarreal. Next, we'll have our next addition of our ongoing preliminary budget work. Today, this month's version installment, I should say, not version installment. Mr. Garcia is with everyone, nice to see you in person.
Great to see everyone, very nice. All right, bear with me as I get myself organized here, please.
So, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the board. So we are starting today, the first of many budget conversations, with a vision of completing the process by August. In today's PowerPoint slide deck, the college will deliver a primer to the budget that will take us into a more comprehensive budget workshop plan for July 27. Currently, there are many pending budget variables to complete the budget plan, including state appropriations and property tax revenues that, when combined, represent 75% of the college's general operating revenues. The state appropriation revenue hinges on the 87th legislature passing the General State Appropriations Bill on April, so on April 27, the House and Senate transitioned their respective pending appropriations bills to a conference committee that is tasked with reconciling the differences between the two bills. If the committee is successful in coming to some agreement, the bill will next move forward to the governor for his approval. The college's property tax revenues determine, in part, by the district's property values. The Office of the County Appraisal will complete and report the final property values to the college by August the 1st. Please note, Mr. John Johnson, our controller, continues to work with the appraisal office to determine trending property valuations. There's currently indication that the residential property valuation continues to scale up, no surprise there. The property category represents 42% of the district's property tax profile. So let's transition into the budget calendar on the next slide, please. So this slide includes all the planning activities that have been completed through the end of February. One important item on this slide is a decision has already been made not to increase the tuition rate. The per semester tuition rate for the fall of 2021 will remain at $69, no change. Please transition to the next slide. The college is at a midpoint of the budget review and recommendation phase, whereby budget requests submitted by the executive team are under review. The process includes narrowing the gap between the budget request to the estimated revenue assumptions driven by the current economic environment. The phase also includes working with Dr. Wilson's office with reconciling the allocation of colleges' resources to the Operating Unit Assessment Plan. This unit assessment plan summarizes tactical activities with outcomes that support the college's strategic plan. I also want to point out a few key dates on this slide. The college will deliver, will deliver a second budget update at the June 8 board meeting, at which time, there's a strong possibility that the college will have the 2022 and 2023 biennium state appropriations funding levels. The last item is the budget workshop scheduled for July 27.
On this slide, you showed July 13, so that date is incorrect. It is a workshop on the 27th.
I am so sorry, yes, there is a correction on there, I'll get it right the next time, sorry about that.
That's quite all right, I didn't.
Thank you.
I'm confused enough, and so when I read one date and have another one in my head, I just, so I wanted to make sure that we all knew that we are not having a meeting on July 13, it's going to be July 27.
Thank you, I always say it takes a try, so thank you for that. So, so August, moving on to the next slide, the month of August. So August will be a busy month whereby the college will need to, will need the board's help with the budget and tax rate approval process. On August 10, the college will request the board to approve two action items, allowing the college to conduct a public hearing for the budget and another hearing for the property tax rate. On August 24, there will be a public hearing for comments on the property tax rate and the budget. Following the hearing, the college will present several action items that includes the approval of the budget, tax rates, and property tax exemptions. If there are no questions on the calendar, I will now ask the team to provide further budget details, beginning with Ms. Landrum.
Any questions on the calendar?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Can we go to the next slide, please? So for our preliminary expense budget that we're showing you for next year, at this time, it doesn't reflect any changes. And the reason for that is that we just don't know what those changes are going to be yet. So we're in the very preliminary stages of the budget process right now, and since we won't know what the state appropriations will be until June, we're just not sure how to change this yet. So we do have some assumptions for the tuition and property tax revenues that Mr. Johnson will go over here later in the presentation. We are currently still analyzing the budget requests that have come in, and we're trying to really identify and isolate those requests that could be covered by the Higher Education Emergency Relief Funding, also known as the HEFFER 2 and 3. So we've identified some critical items that we will need to look at funding, which Dr. West is going to go into more detail on it. So at our next update to the board, we'll definitely have more information on how our expense budget is going to look for next year. So if we don't have any questions, I'm going to ask Ms. McDonald to continue with the next slide.
I do have a question or comment.
Yes, ma'am?
I'd like for, it doesn't have to be today, but Dr. Eskimia or Mr. Garcia to justify the continuing million-dollar set aside we had for the South Campus. We had done that for a couple of years, anticipating the hiring of staff and some things to get that up and running. So as opposed to just carrying that over, I think it would make sense to understand if that is needed, and if so, what's the exact amount and what's the use for that line item to continue on the budget.
Sure, and I can answer part of that right now, is that the, this next year will be the most critical year, because the campus opens, began, the campus is scheduled to be, the STEM building is scheduled to be given to us next year, this, next April. That's when we open the first building there. So it is next year that that allocation would be most critical. What happened last year was, again, with the slowdown of COVID, we didn't know what to do. We didn't know whether to hire or not, so, and so that being said, we made some shifts, kept that contingency in place. And, but I will say that we'll come back with further staffing details on that, but that next year will be the critical year for that. But duly understand the gap that was presented because of COVID. I don't like to say that very often, but that's exactly what happened. But we'll come back with more details.
Well, I'm curious as to, and again, it may be the June workshop as opposed to today's, but as opposed to, there's two ways, two ways of looking at the South Campus delta. And one is to separate it out and say, everything associated with starting the South Campus in our next fiscal year, at least for one year, could be separated out, so we see it clearly. But it is going to be embedded in future years in faculty salaries, exempt salaries, non-salary expenses, et cetera. And so would it be better to have one line item to show where that money is embedded in those other categories? So we understand the delta, part of the delta in those other categories is related to South Campus, and, or simply just to continue as we have, but within more precise number. So just, you decide how you want to do it, but just carrying over a million-dollar amount doesn't make sense. So I think it needs to be justified.
Are we carrying over the same million dollars, or have we been accumulating a million a year for several years?
So the $1 million has been built over the last two years to build capacity. And so we understand where you're coming from, and so there's already been done, some body of work has been done to bifurcate these costs, to determine how best to present it in our next meeting. So, you know, this is just a baseline that we're starting our conversation, and it'll materialize a little bit better next time around. But this feedback really helps in terms of determining what you guys want to look at.
Sure, sure.
No, didn't answer my question.
So, so, so yes, it did accumulate. What happened was, we had a staffing plan that we were expecting to start last year. Okay? And that we did, we did start it even the year before that, and thinking, okay, we're ramping up and getting ready. But then last year, we had no idea we'd be in the position that we're in this year. We were thinking that those dollars would be absolutely critical and put into reserve accounts and other things, because we didn't know, we had no idea the federal government was going to step in or anything else to the level that they have. So, so to answer your question, the answer is yes, it did accumulate in that account. That being said, this is the critical year coming up. We'll have some finer detail as to the staffing levels and the allocations of those dollars here in incoming budget meetings.
Okay, so we're going to see a bank account with several million dollars in it?
It is not allocated for the South Campus in our reserve funds. We have an unrestricted reserve, we have restricted reserves, and we have a risk pool now, a risk reserve fund as well. And so those dollars technically, I think, went into the risk reserve fund, is that correct?
So, so the million dollars is within our unrestricted fund dollars. And so we don't separate our checkbooks, we don't have multiple, it's really one consolidated checkbook. Our GL system is structured so that we can separate each individual fund. These particular dollars for the South Side is embedded in our overall general unrestricted fund balance. Has it accumulated? Yes, it's in our unrestricted accumulated dollars.
Okay, this is just an explanation as to why X amount is in the unrestricted reserve fund?
No reason, I mean, I think for the best part would be is that we have been focusing more anything else in trying to understand the implications of the COVID-19. Our response to that was to focus our attention on the risk reserve fund. And so in terms of setting aside a million dollars for the South Side, I think it's just as good as putting it in the planned fund or the unrestricted. It all depends on the wishes of the board, but you're still in the same position.
I get it, and it's in the unrestricted reserve fund?
Yes, sir.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, sure, transitioning to.
Yes, thank you. This portion of the budget we are going to talk about is our, we'd like to give you a perspective of different scenarios for salary increases for employees, so that you can see how it would impact the budget. So we're providing three different scenarios. We're not making a recommendation for any one today, so we just wanted to give you a perspective of how it would impact the budget. And I know we have some new board members, so our full-time faculty, their salary is in four components. What we are proposing in scenario one is to, if the board approves what we call experience pay, it'd be one-year experience pay. And I know many of you that have been here, you understand what that is. It's a flat dollar amount of $829, and all faculty that are eligible, basically, they had been hired by last October 1st to be eligible for it, they would get the $829. So that's what we call one-year experience pay, and it accumulates. I guess you can kind of equate it to, in a sense, to longevity?
Is that $829 for every year of experience, or is that just like a, once you get a year, you get that raise?
Well, they have an accumulation of all the previous years. We, about six, seven years ago, we had a cap that it was 18 years, but about six, seven years ago, I think it was in 2014, we removed the cap. So if someone had capped out at 18 years, you know, seven years ago, then when we removed that cap, they got to start accumulating that year, if the board approved the year, every year since then.
So if you had 10 years' experience, this would be $8,290?
Yes, it's cumulative, yes, sir.
It's per year.
Yes, it's per year, but the number of years, it won't necessarily equate to their years of service to the college, because it used to be capped. But we removed the cap, I believe it was in 2014.
That part I understood.
Yes, okay. So for this particular scenario one, it would be providing faculty with the year of experience at $829. So you can see in scenario, it's $237,38. And then the, we put on here, impact to summer pay, because it does affect the budget, because we have a certain number of faculty that do teach in the summer. So if their nine-month contract is increased, then it increases the pay that they would receive for teaching summer. So we do provide that to you. And then the benefits that would be associated with that increase, so scenario one, as you can see, would be the 336,493 for faculty. Scenario two for faculty would be, again, the $829, the one-year of experience pay, but it would also be providing an increase to what we call their base or their common base. That's another component to the faculty pay. Right now, it's at $50,000, that's the base or entry level for faculty. Scenario two would. or entry level for faculty. Scenario two would increase that by $500. So it would be $50,500. And then you see the impact to summer and the associated benefits, and then the total, the five, seven, five seventy, I need to forget, five seventy through twelve. Scenario three is the same year experience pay at 829. But in this scenario, the dollar amount to increase the the common base or base would go from $50,000 to $51,000. So it's a $1,000 increase to the base. So that would be $320,000, the associated summer pay impact benefit. So that would be 804,131. So there's scenario one, two, and three for faculty. If you look at exempt and non-exempt, and we are proposing in scenario one, a 1% increase, it would either be to the exempt employees monthly, or it would be to non-exempt to their hourly rate. And then scenario two is 2%. Scenario three is 3%. So those are flat amounts across the board for exempt, non-exempt. And so you have the grand total of scenario one with all employee categories of the 613. Scenario two is the 1.1 million, and then scenario three is about a little over 1.6, eight, six, sorry.
And are your assumptions for faculty, does this, it does not include adjunct? That's a separate?
That's separate. That's in the part-time budget.
Gotcha. Okay. And this assumes full faculty, 100% higher, 100% scenario?
This would be, any anyone in a faculty status would receive the base increase because all faculty that come in at the common base, so they, everyone would be eligible for that. The one-year experience would capture all full-time faculty that were hired prior to October 1st of last year. So we do have a cutoff. You kind of have to be here pretty much almost the whole fiscal year, fiscal year to receive that one-year experience pay. So it does, unless someone was hired after October 1st, they would not be eligible. But that's very, very few. Yes, ma'am.
Other questions on the proposed salary scenarios? Again, they're not making a recommendation today, but they would like some general feedback so that as they do come forward with a specific recommendation next month, we have some feedback. Regent Avret?
Thank you. Ms. McDonald, would this be in addition to any other pay adjustment? Or would this be the only pay adjustment for the year?
As far as what the board would approve, this would be the only pay adjustment. Now, faculty do receive pay adjustments that would begin, the beginning of the fiscal year, that are already written in policy, like if they promoted in rank. So that's already in policy that we do build into the budget. It's not some, the board actually has already approved the policy. So if someone did receive promotion this past year, and it will go into effect this next fiscal year, then they would receive that. So that would be in addition, in addition. We do have an education component to faculty pay. So if someone attained the next level degree, or if someone obtained hours toward the next level degree, and it all, it's in policy, then they would receive that additional monies beyond what we're talking about today.
Again, regents, these are-
Okay, thank you, but-
I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead, Libby. I apologize.
No, 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 that's okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say that these are these proposed, proposed scenarios. This is a leaping off point at this. And so any and all feedback doesn't have, any have to come in this meeting. You think of something later on, or you want to call us. I'll be glad to answer more questions outside of here. But if you have more questions today, we're certainly open. Mr. Kelly.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly.
I can't see how we can give feedback until we know what our revenue is going to look like.
Sure. And that's why, that's it right there. You know, we're waiting for the for the revenues to to solidify, both on the appropriations and the taxes side. We know where the student tuition is, and and that's what Mr. Garcia was referring to. So again, very, very squishy kind of scenarios at this point, nothing, nothing solidified. But that's why things really go, heat up really fast at the latter part of July. And then, and certainly going into, that's why we have all those budget meetings during August. And then that's really where things begin firming up. But just generally speaking, any, any general comments that you may have, everything, we're listening to everything you're saying now.
How long has it been since we looked at giving our employees raises?
So last year, there was a 1% scenario. You want to describe it with a little bit more detail, Ms. Tammy?
Yes. Yeah. And and if you would like, I can work with Dr. Eskimia. I do have a history, that actually I have a history back to 2004 on the different type of-
We don't have to go that far back, but the last couple of years might be helpful.
Let's just focus on the last time we did it.
Okay. Well, last year, the board approved a 1% increase for exempt, non-exempt, and they approved the $829 or the one-year experience pay for faculty. And that's what was approved last year.
Okay, so the 829 is something we implemented last year?
No, it's on the books, but the board has to approve it to, to give it to the to the faculty. It's not an automatic.
Am I right that we have to approve giving this year's 829 to add to their prior years?
Oh, I-
Yes.
So every year, we say, okay, we're going to do it again this year?
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay.
Yes. It has to be approved every year.
So that item only was approved last year. We did not increase the base last year?
Correct.
And did we increase the summer pay impact? Those just show as a result of the other two decisions, your summer pay impact and your benefits impact?
Yes.
Okay. So the only difference scenario this year is increasing the base in scenario two or three, and giving us options of 1%, 2%, and 3% for exempt and non-exempt staff?
Yes.
Okay. Does that help, Bill?
Yes.
Okay.
And we could do hybrids, where once again, we only, only chose to do a percentage increase and not change the base, or vice versa. So there's some, there's something in between 1, 2, and 3.
Right. On staff, if you wanted to, like you said, do a one and a half, or two and a half, or 2.25 on staff, yes. On faculty, it's a little more complicated because we have to stay within their four components. So you could increase base, which if you increase base, that moves everybody along. Everyone is eligible for base. The next would be the the year experience pay, then the rank component, because it, every rank has a dollar value. And then the education component in in every degree level or hours toward the next degree has a dollar value. So those are the four components. So you would have to, with your direction, we would have to figure out what percent to each component, because it's a little more complicated than, say, give a 1% raise, that because of the four different components that make up. Just like on rank, not everyone at this point may have rank, maybe they're brand new to the college. So an increase to rank would not be beneficial if you wanted to move everyone along, or an increase to the education component. It would help those who are in that level right now. But if no one's moving forward, then it doesn't provide that increase to the whole. So we kind of come with these scenarios because those two components pretty much touch every faculty member, and they'll see some type of increase, and they'll all move along together.
So where there's universal components, that we can adjust those across the board on those universal components. But then individually, because of the status of the, particularly in the case of the faculty, there will be variations and differences.
Okay. And then earlier in the meeting, Regent Bennett mentioned that we're not able to attract the best candidates because of our cost of living. So do we know how our salaries stack up?
Yes.
In context of cost of living with the other 49 colleges?
So in terms, specifically on the, on the COLA, I don't have that data, but I do know that we remain at number five out of 50 colleges on average for pay for faculty.
Are you talking about top five?
Five, top five, yes. Top five out of 50. Yes, sir. And that's, that's in the ranks of the, of the very large institutions. We're deemed a large institution. And then there's the Houston's and the Dallas's and the Alamo's and Terrence's and those kinds of, and there's about eight or nine of those. And so we're, we remain, again-
Top five would make us, what, third?
No, top.
Top five out of 50.
Five colleges, not 5%?
No, I'm sorry. Top five, numerical five.
Top 10%.
Top 10%.
Ordinal, ordinal five out of 50, top 10%. So in that regard. But yeah, I mean, Mr. Mr. Bennett brings up a, brings up a good point on being competitive and that sort of thing. So we've, we've pushed that number up over the years. I think we were at one point, I think we were number 13, again, out of 50 at one point years ago. And we worked very diligently to get that base up to 50 in order to achieve that number. Again, many other components, depending on the, on the status and the tenure of the, of the, of the individual faculty member weigh in as well.
Okay, thank you.
So actually, we were ranked number 17-
Yeah.
-in 2014.
Yeah, 17.
Out of 50. We've made a lot of progress to get to number five.
Thank you. Regent Avret?
Thank you. I do think it would be helpful if y'all could let us know when the last time was that we increased the base pay. I'm not sure when that was. And then my other question, and I don't expect an answer to this right now, but one that I'm, I'm curious about is whether we have employees who are making less than $15 an hour, and if so, you know, roughly how many, and if we've looked at what the impact would be if we, if we increased those.
Okay, I have answered to one of your questions. The last time that we increased the faculty base was in fiscal year 20, and we increased it from $48,750 to the $50,000. So that was just year before last. We did increase it to 50.
Yep.
Thank you.
That took several years and a lot of hard work from this board and this college to get there. So.
And amongst our peer group, sir, of large colleges, we actually have the highest rank out of our peer group in, in average faculty pay out of the, our peer group.
Out of our peer of eight, is it eight? Yeah, of the eight large, not the very large, but of the eight.
Nine. I think there's nine counting us. And we're, we have the highest ranking of average faculty pay out of our peer group.
And so again, so what I heard a request is to just look at that data point on, on the hourly pay and come back with a report on that. Anything else on the salary increase scenarios today? Yes, sir, Mr. Garcia?
Yeah. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think that from a professor's standpoint, or from an institution's standpoint, you'd want to be number one, right? But from a taxpayer's standpoint, you'd be feeling like you're paying more in taxes in order to fund to be number one. So again, I think being number fifth is good. I mean, we're, we're getting it, we're keeping and we're attracting good talent. I'm a little concerned that besides, say, for instance, additional educational achievements in terms of either reaching a doctor's degree or master's if they didn't have one, they get an additional increase. Is there anything in our salary, salary structure or salary increases that are related to merit? For instance, if a professor works on a, I want to say, a program or a, or an educational, I want to say, curriculum that might not be done by the college, but they see a niche or they see something, we might be able to get some state funding from, do they, do they get some sort of a bonus? They get some sort of a stipend? If professor, we lose an adjunct professor or something that's teaching in the evening hours, and a professor decides to, to help out and pick up a class in the evening, are there any stipends or any kind of help for that? So I'm more talking, talking about, since we just had the base salary increased about a year and a half, two years ago, is there anything we're doing for merit, for merit basis?
Go ahead. There's two different scenarios there, but go ahead.
There's different, difference, there's many factors to that. One is, if a faculty member teaches over what we call their load, you know, so it depends on what area you're in, your load could be possibly 15 lecture, 18 contact hours. It just depends on what area you teach in. If you teach beyond that, you do get extra pay. So if, if an instructor picks up an additional class beyond what they need to work to receive their nine-month contract, then they do get extra pay, and it is based off of the fee schedule, we pay adjuncts. So if they pick up an extra class, and it depends on their educational level, which we have them in different levels for pay, they do receive extra pay for that. We call it overload. So they do get overload pay. And it just depends on, we have some different scenarios. Faculty, if they take on an extra task, but we allow them to do that in lieu of teaching, we give them what we call release time. So they receive their same faculty pay, but they're released from teaching in the classroom X percent, and they get to spend the time on that additional assignment or initiative or project or program. We also have some grants which release time can be given, where they're released from, from having to teach in the classroom partially. And or we do have some grants that do allow to pay additional stipends for doing extra work. It just depends on which type of grant that it could be, or if it's an internal college program, we need a little extra help on, like SAC COC. You know, some receive release time from teaching because we need it all hands on deck to help us with that gathering data and putting that report together. So it just depends. So it's multiple different scenarios, sir.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
It's good education for us all. Those are good questions. Anything else?
Really quickly on the hiring, there's, it's, it's lots of, I'm hearing more and more scenarios where, you know, we're reaching out to hire faculty in particular from around the country, and the impact that COVID is having is just searches are falling apart. Not all, not across the board, but it's just, as you would expect, nothing is, we are taking nothing for granted because, because of the impact of COVID when it comes to hiring. You can attract them with, with, with dollars and everything else, but life is happening all over the world, as we know. And there is an impact that we're trying to understand as these committees are coming together. And I'm hearing a little bit more about it than I realized.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you, Tammy. As you can see, there's so much complexity in our business, and so I'm very thankful to have Tammy on our team who can explain the complexity of our payroll. So next slide, we're going to have Dr. West to go over preliminary expense increases that we're seeing out there.
You're on mute, Kathy.
Okay, thank you. As we review all the various types of MNO expenses, we must also consider any increases or decreases to our facility and grounds-related expenses, such as electricity, water, security, and insurance, especially as our new buildings come online and our old buildings go offline, for example, the buildings on the South Campus in fiscal year 2022. At this time, we have not included dollar estimates for these items because we are still evaluating, you know, what to include as we have been discussing. Does anyone have any questions?
I don't see any. Thank you.
If not, now I would turn this over to John, who will discuss the revenue assumptions.
Thank you, Kathy. As you might imagine, our, our current revenue challenges and assumptions are still in, in somewhat limbo. Our tuition and fees is looking over our assumptions. As you're aware, we did not increase our tuition tax rate this year. And right now, as a starting point, our enrollment growth projections are flat. We're using actually fiscal year 19, 2019, as our starting point to project what our enrollment will look like. Of course, with the current, you know, pandemic, it's, it's, it's somewhat hard to know exactly where, where we'll be this next fiscal year. With that being said, we're keeping the same revenue budget as we did in year 19 and in year 20, anticipating, again, that enrollment growth. Under our tax assumption, and I have to apologize, I, there's an error on that assumption where I say the, it assumes a 4.25% valuation growth. I missed that. That should actually be 3%. I think some of you who have been on the board many years might be aware. I use that every year as a starting point to see where we end up.
Laurie, can you mute? Thank you.
I'm sorry, did I miss something?
We had a regent join us and just needed to get her to mute. But while we are, got a little break here, there is a question about your tuition and fees assumption. Mr. Kelly?
Okay.
Building on what Regent Bennett was saying earlier, are you saying that we're going to have flat enrollment growth just to say that? Or is there something that indicates to you that enrollment is not going to grow?
So I'll take that one, Joan. Regent Kelly, right now, it is a placeholder to work from. from. And what we are hearing from across the state and the nation, we're working with other powers that be, because the students' migration patterns, if you will, are going to be very similar and so forth. We'll start getting closer to a stronger scenario, a more firm scenario, as we start watching more and more, almost on really a day-by-day basis of student activities over the summer. We'll see what summer looks like. Summer enrollment is often an indicator. Of course, now you're throwing in the X factor of COVID and all these other kinds of things, which is just really throwing things off. But what we're expecting, the word is nationwide and statewide, what we're hearing right now is that because of the proliferation of vaccines and those sorts of things, and given where we are with the economy and where unemployment dollars and unemployment scenarios are, that there is supposed to be a big return to school. And we think it'll probably be more on the back end of fall. There's two halves of fall. As you may have, well, it's been, yeah. And then spring. And so, again, we'll wait to get into summer. We'll see what summer looks like. I've already got preliminary data. I'm getting daily updates right now from the enrollment office. And so, again, John is using this, Raul is using this term as a, this scenario as just a baseline right now, just from which to work.
Okay, so that's not, that's just to have something to work off of?
That's it.
Yes, not based upon anything that you're seeing.
Yes, correct. And you'll hear us more, we'll come back with some summer, other indicators such as summer statewide trends, nationwide trends for that matter.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Yes, Dr. Turner?
Yeah, I just had a question.
Whoops.
I'm sorry.
Sorry. So I have a question. So you think that colleges that are coming face-to-face, will they see a spike in enrollment faster than those who stay remote? Is that, is there anything out there as you're listening through, or should face-to-face be a priority or a mix?
I'll take that one. Great question, Dr. Turner, and I think the logic stands that because we're hearing it from our students, and that they want to return, that they need to return more and more. And if you heard my report earlier, that's the intent, is to go into fall and prepare for that scenario where there's the most face-to-face opportunities for students than we've seen in over a year. By then, it will be a year and a half. So I think that that logic is absolutely solid, and we're hearing more and more from these students getting stopped. I know our general counsel got stopped in the grocery store the other day as well, and we're hearing it all the time. The students are, please let us go back. Please let us go back. I've got my vaccination. I've got this. I've got that. So.
My, my concern is related to flat, to FY 2019 levels as opposed to flat to FY 20 levels. And when I say FY 19, I guess it would be helpful if we.
Yes, the reason for that, I think.
I'm trying to figure out, fall of 19 was one of our highest ever. Fall of 20, we saw a huge dip.
Yes.
So help me out here.
So the assumption there is that fall 21 will look more like a, quote, "a normal fall" than even the previous fall. Going into last fall.
So fall of 2018 would be fiscal year 2019. So you're actually looking at fiscal year two years ago.
That's the scenario that we have out there.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
Just wanted to understand, make sure we're thinking.
No, no, no. That's why we're here to talk about all these kinds of things. The more we do talk about it, I know it takes up a lot of time, but it does make us all, it helps us all.
Other questions on the tuition and fee assumptions? Any questions on the tax assumptions? John, I think you were in the middle of explaining your 3% valuation growth rather than the 4.25.
Right. I apologize for that. I failed to change that assumption on my valuation growth. Every year, I put in a 3% valuation growth until I get the final certified appraisals from the county. So I failed to change that. But anyway, using a 3% valuation growth, and I always use it through $300 million in new construction. The other assumption is keeping the same tax rate as we had this year. Now, remember, this is very preliminary. This is a starting point. So normally, every year, I'll use the same tax rate and indicate to you what will happen if we use the same tax rate based upon the other two assumptions. So that's why I put those in there. Again, I think we've been over the state appropriations. Natalie and Dr. Eskamia both explained where we are as far as state appropriations are concerned. I think there's an indication that, worst-case scenario, we would remain flat on the state appropriations. And I think we're all very, at least have a positive outlook that we will get additional revenues on the appropriations. If you'll go to the next slide, I'll get into this a little bit more. Next slide, please. Okay, as you will see, the state appropriations and, of course, our insurance contribution and retirement contributions all come from the state, so we left those flat for now. Our tuition and fees, once again, we left to the, say, level as we had last year. Now, what would happen, let's say, if we do see the 3% evaluation growth and the $300 million increase in new construction and keeping the same tax rate, what would that bring to us? That would actually increase our property tax revenue, at least right now, with everything I'm seeing, increase our tax revenue by $3.2 million. I have some preliminary information from the appraisal district. Of course, you know, this information that we get in April is very early. There's always a lot of adjustments that happen between now and the end of July. The property valuation growth over last year, what they're showing is about 3.5%. So that's pretty close to the 3% I started with. And then the new construction, right now, they're showing it $348 million. There again, it's very close. So I don't see any huge changes in any of those numbers. So right now, like I say, these are kind of very preliminary. It gives you an idea of where we are and what we may anticipate. Are there any questions?
So in a future iteration of this, you would, this was our budgeted tuition and fees for the current fiscal year, but you're saying you're actually going to relate the budget projections to FY 2019. So in a future iteration, we'll see those adjustments accordingly?
For the tuition and fees or for the taxes?
Tuition fees.
Well, the tuition and fees for next year, at this point in time, are keeping, being kept at the same levels until we see some kind of indication that summer enrollment may be changing.
Okay. You understand my question, Dr. Eskamia?
Yes, yeah. The adjustments will be, it'll be largely in the state appropriations as those numbers really solidify. I can tell you right now, there's a scenario, the worst-case scenario, to date brings us $1.7 million in additional state appropriations. And so that number will solidify. Again, that's to be divided into the biennial scenario, so about 800 and something thousand per year. So that and some other scenarios will be firming up. Duly noted.
Well, my question was not related to, it was related to the enrollment numbers. So the enrollment numbers in FY 20, we kept flat for FY 21. You're keeping flat for FY 22, but you just told us an assumption that you're going back to FY 19. So.
We, yeah, we will, we'll bring in several scenarios.
Sharpen that pencil.
Yes, yes.
So we're still firming up these figures, and in our next presentation, we'll have that a little bit more firmed up for you. And what you will probably see is adjustments in those categories reflecting the best available information at that point in time. And same thing will happen with our expense budget. I think we sort of talked about this last year, where there was a shifting of expenses. I suspect it's going to be a similar scenario in trying to balance out the revenues with expenses. Okay. So 75% of our revenue is still pending. Big, big, big major piece there. More to come.
Any other questions for the revenue side? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Next slide, please. Okay. So while we're on the subject of funding, I wanted to provide an update on the higher education emergency funding, or HERF for short. As a reminder, HERF has a narrow focus and can only be used to prevent, prepare, and respond to COVID-19. In the last board meeting, we talked about the rule of supplement and not supplant, and how the act of supplanting has undesirable financial and reputational risk outcomes. Pivoting to our spending plan, the college's spending plan revolves around the Department of Education's Q&amp;A as a guidance that was updated on March 19th of 2021. I learned this morning that a new guidance was released today. And so my whole presentation went out the door this morning, so I'm having to regroup right now. So bear with me. I'll do my best. So the college will need to regroup and adjust our plan accordingly to the new guidance that was issued just today. In addition, the college has not received the grant award notification and has not, and the related $18.6 million of the HERF III has not been released to the college. I suspect that would be forthcoming in the next couple of days. A little bit more about the student aid spending plan. The Department of Education requires the college to spend $11.2 million on student aid grants. My quick preview of the guidelines today has, there's indication that there's a bit more flexibility relative to the HERF I. More to come on that in our next presentation. But the one objective of our plan is to help as many of our most needy students over the period of the grant agreement. So as you can see here, I have it on a term-by-term table of dollar amounts. Our current calendar of the budget plan includes allocating $1.9 million for the fall and spring terms over the period of the contract, and $800,000 for the summer terms. The budgeted amounts will be adjusted as we collect better information regarding pending trends and student needs throughout the grant period. In addition, the college has established a subcommittee consisting of individuals with frontline student service experience who are currently working on the finer details of the plan. But I'm sure it's going to get adjusted once again with this new information. So again, more to come on this, on our next update. From a compliance perspective, the college cannot condition the receipt of financial aid grants to students on continued or future enrollment. That's verbatim from the old guidelines. This language can be found in question number eight of the Department of Ed's Q&amp;A guidance that was updated on March 19, 2021, the old guidance. We have some new guidance. I think there's similar language in there. Transitioning to the institutional category, valued at $29.8 million. This includes the HERF III valued at $18.6 million. The college's preliminary plan is based on the old guidelines. The preliminary plan includes recovering health and safety supply costs and revenue losses to the tune of $3.3 million. Recovery of dollars. That's going to help our bottom line at year-end. The preliminary plan also includes IT enhancement for instruction and student support services, instructional delivery, and IT security, including controls against cyber attacks. The next step is to adjust the plan for the, if any, to reflect the most current guidelines, and then prioritize that list to make sure that the first and foremost, to make sure that first and foremost, the costs are related to the coronavirus with a backdrop that our spend supports the college's strategic plan. Again, a backdrop to the strategic plan. First and foremost, compliance with the guidelines. So here, interestingly enough, one new requirement under the new guidelines is that the college must implement evidence-based practices to monitor and suppress in accordance with public health guidelines. Now, what does that mean? I'm sure there's going to be a lot of webinars regarding this, a lot of discussions. But here's a couple of examples that they provided. Supporting cleaning and sanitary campus environments. Cleaning and disinfection. Enhancing ventilation in classrooms and common areas. Paying for time off for staff to get the vaccine. Using mask campaigns to increase mask compliance on campus. Setting up vaccination sites. Pretty much everything that we've done so far. So the good news is, the thing that we need to do is to determine if there were any related incremental costs that was picked up in our normal operating budget, then now I can build into the HERF, recoup those dollars. That's the next step in spending these dollars. So more to come on our next update as we unpack the new guidelines. So Madam Chair, President, and members of the board, this concludes our report. Any questions?
Additional questions for Mr. Garcia? Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Obviously, we have a lot of continuing conversation to put all this in context for our new board members, and life is different post-COVID.
So just to give some perspective, this is my accumulation of data of HERF guidelines and so on and so forth. But more to come.
Thank you very much. Okay, our next staff report is regarding a bond update on our South Campus construction, and Mr. Strabos is joining us remotely.
Regents, thank you. Next slide, please. This is an update on your 2016 bond. I've worked with finance, analyzed the budget, and your bond proceeds were $139 million. Our interest income through March 31st, about $3.3 million. That's a subtotal of $142.3 million. I'm adding in a line item for the separate $9.8 million that it's been set aside. So that total availability is $152 million. The encumbrances so far, the construction costs are right at $117 million. The soft costs, which is the architects, engineers, construction materials, testing, building permits, everything else, almost $16 million. I'm adding in the contingency. We have not touched that yet. And so your total commitments and contingency, it's $143,564,133. That leaves an available balance of almost $8.6 million. Next slide, please. This gives you a detailed breakdown on those soft costs, the design, the testing, commissioning, utilities, building permits, project management, legal, insurance. So those were your $16 million of soft costs, which is right at 10% on that. Next slide, please. This is just kind of overview. It leads into another agenda item on the construction costs. You approved two change orders. We have on the agenda item later, another, you approved one change order for this evening. This afternoon, we have a second change order, and I will talk about that in just a few minutes. Next item, please. Next slide, please. Here's your overall schedule, your detailed schedule. The design started in 2018, ran in 2019. Site work started and is well underway. Parking lots are there. If you haven't been out to the site, I would encourage you to go by the site. The intersection at Rodfield Road in Yorktown is open. Rodfield Road is open, so you can get there through Rodfield Road. They continue to make outstanding performance on completing the project. We're targeting having students enseized in the STEM building, probably in the fourth, that's calendar quarter. So the fall of 2022 and fully open in the spring of 2023. Next slide, please. So this is the overall campus site. Down at the bottom right-hand corner is that intersection of Rodfield Road going off to the top of the slide. Yorktown Road is running across the bottom. We're kind of about in the middle of the site, and you have the drainage ditch to the north of it. And the City Corpus Christi Police Academy will be to the left of us. It's on our property, per the interlocal agreement. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. These are renderings of what the finished, finished campus is going to look like in this first phase. We are working on a change order to add back in the pond at the front, but what you do see is on the left, you see the canopy and that was added in change order number one along with some other parts of the project. Next slide, please. Your left slide shows you the, in this particular case, that's the culinary arts building, that's the STEM building. Too many buildings here, the STEM building. And then you see the, that's coming from the east corner. And then the right-hand slide is showing you the main building. And that's the new concrete drives approach with physical plant in the background on that. Next slide, please. It's showing you an overview, this is from the top of one of the buildings. So you can see the courtyard in the middle when it has trailers parked in it. And then you can see the inside, this is actually on the, on the right-hand side, is the culinary arts building. Next slide, please. This is the main building under construction. Again, these photos are about a month old now, they continue to make progress. The weather hasn't hurt them very much at all on the, on the projects at all. Next slide, please. And it's just the overall site. Again, these are more of the parking lots being put under construction and you see the concrete drives. Next slide, please. Here's the central plant. All the equipment is in place, the cooling towers are in place. They're in the process of the systems and equipment, sure everything's operational. As the STEM building gets fully enclosed, actually turning on the heating and ventilation air conditioning system and testing it under those loads later this year. Next slide, please. And this, and so this is updated on a partnership with the city of Corpus Christi, our interlocal agreements. The Rodfield Road project is complete. Turner Ramirez is the architect for the City's Police Academy and they started the schematic design on that project. The pedestrian engine trail, the design is complete, it's in with the city of Corpus Christi for their review. As soon as we have those reviewed comments, we'll actually advertise to award that project. The work, the town are complete and start with the city on the median improvements. And so then we have the parcel of land down there at the bottom, we're working with the city of Corpus Christi on getting that property back into Delmar's property and the campus. Next slide, please. Using AGCM for our construction management on the project, they've been working for Delmar for several years now. It's just kind of overview role in the project, integration, communication. They're the owners' representatives on the campus, they have personnel out on the site every day, all day. Next slide, please. And their specific services, they're working on the construction services specifically, on-site quality assurance, cost management, acting as a representative, working with the contractors, the architects, the subcontractors every day. And next slide, please. Questions then about your two thousand sixteen bond?
Any questions? It was a quick update. You raced through that. It's important.
I got one question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Bennett.
Yes, sir.
We authorized a hundred and thirty-nine million in bond debt. And is that how much we netted on that? Was that our net proceeds?
I've gotten that from finance, but I'll defer to Raoul and his team, that those, that number came from Kathy.
Yeah, I, I think now then the.
That's the accounting one they reported to me.
There's an, I think there's an accounting error on that. The one thirty-nine is the total amount. And so.
I would expect that was a gross growth, it means the cost associated with it.
Yeah.
I'm familiar with that.
Yes, the only growth beyond that.
This is Jay Gordon, the Scotty Hino, so the, the bond election amount would be how much you actually netted your project.
Yes, I'll find out from finance exactly what that amount is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Are there other questions?
But I would, I would encourage y'all to drive by the site anytime. And I know later as they get the buildings further along, be complete, work on coordinating the actual site visit and walkthrough of the STEM building for sure, it'll be complete soon.
Thank you, John. Regents, are there other questions? Yes, sir, Mr. Kelly.
Okay, so I'm seeing total commitments and contingencies of one hundred and forty-three million dollars.
Can you speak up?
Well, I've included the contingency, but the contingency is not committed yet, it's reserved.
Yeah, but I heard that we were sixty-five percent done with the construction? Have we spent all our money? Or what am I not understanding?
Well, we have a construction contract amount for approximately a hundred and seventeen million dollars. We have soft costs for sixteen million dollars.
Okay, John, John, so the hundred and sixteen that I'm seeing in here is just the contract amount, not the amount that's actually been paid to the contractor?
That is correct, no, we've not paid the contractor, we've only paid him about sixty percent of that.
Then I understand, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Yes, and this is Kathy East West. I just wanted to say the hundred and thirty-nine million is the total cash that we have received on these bonds? If that clears that question up.
Okay, so it's net proceeds. Very good, thank you.
Yes, and then, then he's added in the interest that we have earned to date, which is three point three million. So we have that extra amount of cash available.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions?
Thank you, Kathy, and I get those numbers from, from finance and verify them with finance.
Mr. Garcia, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Chair. John, the question I have is related to the change orders against the contingencies. The, the, the change orders are taken against the contingency amounts, right? Are we to approve change orders that are going to add to the overall project cost?
So the change orders do add to the contractor's purchase order amount, they do not change the overall contract budget. And so far, the first change order was funded with interest income. And what I'm proposing for later, when this afternoon we look at the second change order, it is also approved from funded through, interest, unfunded, unencumbered interest income. And so still not touching the contingency yet.
Okay, but at some point, if we did some things in the project that may take us over to the one sixteen or one seventeen hundred million that we, hundred million that we committed to the contractor for the, for the project, that would go against the contingency, right? We would not increase the, the total budgeted amount for the project?
The, the total project budget amount does not change. And we can fund the change order either through the contingency, as you just stated, or what I'm personally recommending right now is to use the unencumbered interest income.
Okay, yeah.
So that we, that we continue to reserve the contingency. As we get further along in the project, we're literally in the process of starting to finalize discussions about the amount of I T, which is, and it's a very large number of computers, just I T hardware, has to go into the buildings to make them operational, for example. So we have, still have a lot of other costs that we just haven't nailed down yet that are separate from the construction. So at this point, because we do have the interest income that's available, I'm recommending we continue to tap into that as needed and reserve the contingency fund.
Okay, thanks, John, I'm okay with that, thank you.
Yes, sir.
If we might have a little bit of discussion for understanding sake. The board made the decision to fund the F F and E out of the, our, another reserve fund, a plant, plant reserve fund. So one of the possible uses of that contingency, of those contingency dollars, for example, could be, at the end of the day, to reimburse ourselves for the F F and E that was purchased out of reserve funds as opposed to out of the bond, bond proceeds. So that would be, that was a discussion that we had when we made that decision, is to commit the plant funds early so that we knew we would have there in case something else went wrong or there was some other issue. Again, that's why you have your contingency funds there for weather-related or other kinds of project delays. If that contingency ends, ends up not being used, it could go back into pay, pay back that balance to the plant fund.
Yeah.
Am I speaking that correctly for all those concerned? Ms. Dr. Eskamia?
Yes.
John, give us an update on, go ahead, hold on, before I go on to that, are you okay?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm just going to have a party comment.
We're gonna, yeah, we're gonna have more, we can have more opportunity for, for the specifics when we talk about this next, when we talk about this, the proposed change order. So the, the short answer is, is, is yes. And, and the better off that the construction's going and knock on wood, everything is moving ahead nicely. We can have opportunities to have two different scenarios where we're, where we're going to pay for the F F and E. That's, that's the good news and where we're headed. Mr. Strabos? Well, before I go on, I, I don't want to get, I don't want to move into the next agenda item, I want to answer your questions first.
Well, just the only, the only concern I had that I want to point out is just that the, if the total amount of approved projects or bond, bond approval was one thirty-nine and people understand that if we earned interest on the money, the project cost could go up to one forty-two. If it goes beyond that in any kind of measure, I just want to make sure that we're transparent. There could be perfect reasons why we might have to go over that, that amount. But if we don't have to, that, that's great. But I just want to make sure that we're transparent to the public in every way we can, okay? Thank you.
Sure, and Mr. Strabos will incorporate, include that delineation and make that clear, clear in his presentation here in just a little bit. Yes, sir.
All right, any other questions during this workshop session? This was designed to give us, again, a context that we haven't had, haven't had an update in a while. And then we've got the action item later on on the change order. All right. We will move on to our pending list. Board members, we have in your packet what we can expect. In, in addition to our regular annual calendar, these are the pending items that are, we see coming forward. At our June meeting, we are going to do a workshop session on regional workforce needs and incorporated that into, is also a workshop on our strategic plan. And as I mentioned earlier, we're going to receive this on a quarterly basis. We'll do our annual professional services contract. The board has an opportunity to see all of the professional service contracts that the college has that are, that are board-approved. And we see which ones are nearing their expiration date, which ones are in the first year of a, you know, five-year term or the third year of a five-year term, whatever it may be. We see all of that information that is compiled for us. And then in August, we'll see our investment reports and our financial reports, have an internal audit report to the board. We hear, we heard today, we'll have the ad hoc bylaws committee is looking to do their initial recommendations to us with potential action in September. We also will have a S A C S and Q E P reaffirmation update. And we'll hear the results of the branding discussion that our college communications office has been working on. So that's what we've got coming up for the rest of the summer so far. Any questions on our pending item list? All right, we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have on our consent agenda approval of minutes for April thirteenth, acceptance of investment reports for April and financials for March. Do any items need to be removed for separate consideration? If not, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? So move. Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson, Dr. Adami seconds that motion. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Moving on to our regular agenda. We have the opportunity to confer, gosh, the highest possible honor to a professor for Delmar College and have the opportunity to look at the professor emeritus status for Ms. Kristen Wilkerson and Dr. Jonda Halcom. Our chief academic, chief academic officer is here to present that for us. Dr. Halcom.
Thank you. Madam Chair, Regents, Dr. Eskamia. I'm very pleased today to present Kristen Wilkerson to you for consideration of emeritus status. Emeritus status is a distinction that is reserved for those faculty who have shown distinguished service, significant contributions to higher education, meritorious teaching, and special honors. Emeritus status is awarded only to a few upon retirement. This is an important and very distinguished honor. It's a really congratulatory event today. Your packet contains the policy covering the eligibility for consideration of emeritus status and the process for nominations. Our faculty emeritus consideration today was recommended by the dean, the faculty council, and the chief academic officer following the outlined policy and procedures. The packet also contains Ms. Wilkerson's C V and specific criteria and distinction in professional practice, educational growth, and institutional and community service. I'm going to read a resolution in recognition of Ms. Wilkerson, which highlights those achievements. And I will ask the Board of Regents to confer emeritus status on Ms. Kristen Wilkerson. The resolution in recognition and profound appreciation for distinguished service by Ms. Kristen Wilkerson. Whereas Ms. Kristen Wilkerson, professor of child development, early childhood, served as an exemplary educator among her peers at the college for over thirty-four years. During her tenure at the college, Ms. Wilkerson demonstrated exemplary leadership as the chair of the Department of Human Sciences and Education. Whereas Ms. Wilkerson's expertise was invaluable in establishing the college's Center for Early Learning in two thousand two. To further advocate the excellence of the center, Ms. Wilkerson became a certified early childhood outdoor playground inspector through the National Program for Playground Safety and Childcare Health Consultant. She served as a strong supporter of students, as a faculty advisor for the Early Childhood Club. Her guidance and diligence, working collaboratively with the program faculty, led to the successful accreditation by the National Association of the Education of Young Children for the Child Development Early Childhood Program in two thousand nineteen. Whereas Ms. Wilkerson was a member of several professional organizations, including N A E Y C, the Texas Community College Teachers Association, and the Child Development Educators Association. She continually dedicated her service to the community, working with United Way of the Coastal Bend, the Texas A and M University Corpus Christi Teacher Education Advisory Board, Week of the Young Child Book Festival with the Corpus Christi Public Library, Skills USA State Conference, the Citywide Health Fair, the Antonio Garcia Center Education Advisory Committee, and numerous events with the Port and City of Corpus Christi to promote culinary and hospitality expansion in the region. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Delmar College's Board of Regents formally acknowledges and extends its profound appreciation for service to our college and community by recognizing Ms. Kristen Wilkerson and the title of Professor Emeritus on this day, May eleventh, two thousand twenty-one. There is a place for your signature, Madam Chair, if you accept this resolution.
Thank you very much, Dr. Halcom, and thank you to all who brought this nomination forward. We appreciate this opportunity to recognize outstanding faculty. Is there a motion to adopt the resolution conferring to Ms. Kristen Wilkerson the status of Professor Emeritus? Dr. Lori Turner makes that motion?
Second.
And second by Mr. Kelly. I'm going to allow Regents to make a comment before we officially vote on it. And after we vote, then I'm going to allow you to, to make some comments for the benefit of your colleagues as well. Are there any Regents who would like to make a comment for, in support of this? Ms. Hutchinson?
Yes, I'll be supportive. All my years of being on the Board of Regents, Ms. Wilkerson's name is one that keeps coming up. There were honors and everything from, from, you know, major honors to testimonies by students and the impact that she's had. And so it's been tremendous to, to watch what you've done and contributed. And I'm, I'm glad to be able to put this honor on you. You've earned it.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Any other Regents?
I'd like to.
Yes, Mr. Kelly.
I haven't been on the Board of Regents to watch your career. But my wife has run in a childcare, early childcare facility. I thank you for being a leader in the community and making Delmar a leader in this important field. Very much appreciate all your work. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And so all those in favor of adopting this resolution in support of naming Ms. Wilkerson as Professor Emeritus, please raise your hand. All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Congratulations, Professor Emeritus Wilkerson. Would you like to say a few words? Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I was able to do all of those things that I got to do because of the professional development and the support that Delmar College provided me, as well as working with our community partners out there in the community that allowed me to do those things. So I've always felt very lucky that I loved my job and I was doing what I wanted to do. And even more fortunate that I was able to work with such strong personnel and develop such great friendships over the years. So I feel really blessed and I thank you all for having me for all those years. And I'm really honored to have this recognition.
Congratulations. Thank you for being here today. We will next hear about a resolution to authorize issuance of up to $8.435 million in limited tax refunding bonds. Mr. Garcia?
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. President, members of the Board. The action item before you is for your consideration to call and refund all the Series 2011 bonds maturing on or after August 15, 2022, and to delegate the approval of the final terms to the President and/or the Vice President and Chief Financial Officer, as long as the final terms result in the following. Number one, a net cost savings to the college of at least 2% of the principal amount of the refunded Series 2011 bonds. And number two, the final maturity date of the Series 2021 bonds does not extend beyond the final maturity date of the Series 2011 bonds, i.e. August 15, 2023. Assuming the college is successful with issuing the debt in accordance with the prescribed parameters, the college will report back to the Board details of the new debt in the June Board meeting. Dave Gordon from Estrada Henoosa and Company is here today to provide further details on the refunding. Mr. Gordon?
Good afternoon. Thank you all. Yes, sir. This is Dave Gordon with Estrada Henoosa. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Great. So you have the presentation in front of you. If you can go to the next slide, please.
You can continue, sir.
Okay, I'm seeing just the cover page, but I'll go ahead and go through the presentation on my own then. On page one, just a listing of the outstanding debt of the college. The, it's the 2011 bond shown at the bottom, 8.435 million that are outstanding. Those are callable on August 15th of this year. So those will be currently callable here very shortly. The idea would be to refinance that debt to experience whatever savings we can get. You can see also below the debt profile of the college, you have a slight dip in your debt service next year and then a further dip in 2024 and then even further dip in 2027. Otherwise, it's fairly level debt service. Next slide, please. So because of only two maturities of these obligations remaining, they mature in 8/15/2022 and 8/15/2023, we propose to staff to refinance this debt using a private placement as the instrument to do that versus doing a public offering like the college has done historically. There's a limited amount of time to actually experience the savings from this refinancing. But given the 5% coupon and where rates are today, we still expect to see some reasonable savings from this. So that's what we've anticipated here. If we were going into the public bond markets, we would be able to price this fairly accurately in terms of what our understanding of how this would sell would be. In this case, we've modeled this at a 1% rate. I expect the rate actually of the refunding bonds to be something more like 0.7% or so or maybe even lower than that. So what we're going to show you here is assuming a 1% rate. Whenever you do a private placement, what we do in essence is solicit banks for their proposal to basically buy that debt directly. And then they would hold that for their account. When you do that, some banks are going to have a very strong appetite for the debt where others are going to have, they're not going to be as competitive. So it's a pretty substantial range between probably the winning bid that we receive and maybe the last bid. Again, for the purposes of this model, we're showing a 1% rate. Next slide, please. So assuming that you were able to do this at 1%, you can see what the savings would be. It would be approximately $412,000 or so, $413,000 or a little less than 5% in terms of the total net present value savings. And you can see the cash flow savings towards the bottom there where it has the savings column is highlighted. Due to some technical reasons, we can't sell any more than 8.435 million of debt. Normally, we would sell the bonds with some premium. And therefore, the par amount would actually be significantly lower than the old debt amount. In this case, because of the way we're accessing the market, going through the private debt offering, it's fairly likely that we might end up selling this at par. So there'd be a slight contribution that the college would make. But we've netted all those things out as well as the expected cost of issuance. And again, even assuming the 1% rate, which, like I said, is probably very conservative, we expect to see at least around $413,000 of net present value savings or about 4.9% or so. Next slide, please. So working with your staff, we've already prepared a private placement RFP. We also had Thomas Burgen with McCall Parkers Morton is on the line. And he prepared, and not only the resolution is before you today, but also participated in preparing the RFP. We've sent that out to a list of approximately 20 banks or so. I know a number of them have already indicated they're very interested in buying the debt. So we expect that if you pass the resolution today, we will get the bids back from the banks on Monday. And then on Tuesday, we would actually approve the final sales. And you would be delegating authority to the pricing officers indicated in the resolution to complete the sale. And then, as Raul mentioned, we report back in June, the actual final results, and then close on June 10th. So that's the plan of attack here. Are there any questions from anybody on the Board?
Any questions? Mr. Bennett?
I have one. Yes. That 2011 debt, when it was issued, was that issued at par because it's got a 5% coupon on it?
Well, normally, and you, the college has historically accessed the public bond market. That market would typically sell with certain types of coupons principally over the last decade or so. Those have been 5% coupons or 4% coupons. But the actual interest rates, the yield on the bonds has been significantly lower than that. And particularly today, the yield is quite low. So when you do that, you're actually selling the debt at a premium. So I know, for example, there was a discussion earlier with Mr. Strabos about 139 million from the bond collection. You actually issued significantly less in terms of par amount, but you received 139 million dollars in terms of net proceeds. So back in 2011, when that debt was issued, those were actually refinancing bonds of a previous series of bonds. They had 5% coupons, which makes it very attractive to refinance. But that means that they were sold at a premium. And so the actual yield on that was significantly lower. I don't know if that answers your question, but that's-
It does. Very good. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Are there other questions? If not, we have an action item recommended by staff. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but it's presented in both the agenda and the cover memo to authorize the issuance of up to $8.435 million in principal amount for the Delmar College refunding bonds, Series 2021. Is there a motion to that effect?
Some of-
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Adami. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Mr. Gordon. Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Now we'll hear from, thank you, sir. Now we'll hear from Mr. Strabos again on the action item related to the change order for the South Campus.
We talked a little bit about this briefly in the previous presentation. Specifically with our primary contractor, they have two separate contracts. One is for the central plant and one is for everything else, the main stem and culinary arts. So we have one change order for each of those contracts. For the central plant, the change order is 167 million and 63. And then for the main building, 271,886. You see the adjusted totals. And again, per our previous discussion, I'm recommending funding these through bond interest income so that we do not touch the contingency. The nature of these change orders, these are a result of the architect's supplemental information, the request for information, responses as issued by the architect, bulletins issued by the architect in cooperation to incorporate city of Corpus Christi permit revision comments, some unforeseen site conditions. And you do have the full detailed backup. There's almost 400 pages of backup for these change orders. Are there any specific questions about the change orders?
We do not have the 400 pages of backup, and I'm glad that we don't. We just have the cover memo. Thank you for sparing us that. Are there any questions about-
We need the server to respond to that.
Are there any questions about this?
We do have the full backup.
Any questions about this change order? Mr. Bennett?
So this change order is to comply with city ordinances that have changed. Is that correct?
Part of it is, yes, sir. It's part of the building code review and the inspectors, as the city Corpus Christi reviews the plans and makes inspections. They are telling us changes that we have to make, and so we have to incorporate those changes. Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Is there a motion to approve the change order as presented? Dr. Adami makes that motion. Is there a second? Second by Dr. Turner. Sorry, I saw her hand way first. Any questions on the motion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Any opposed? Same sign. That motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Strabos.
Thank you.
And lastly, going to have a discussion on the possible action to replace, excuse me, relating to the appointment of filling our at-large Regent vacancy. And again, it's with great regret that we are in this position to have to replace Regents Salinas, given our summer schedule. Wanted to go ahead and have this discussion today so that we could be prepared to expedite and potentially onboard a new Regent in time to help with the budget discussions that are coming forward. You have in front of you a proposed process for the at-large Regent position, very similar to what we have done in the past. Because this is an at-large position, the applicants can come from any region within the taxing district of Delmar College. And those are defined and will be defined as part of the press release. We are asking candidates who might be interested to submit a letter of interest, a resume, and up to five letters of reference addressing their qualifications. Those documents would be submitted to our General Counsel, Mr. Augie Rivera, by mail, in person, or sent electronically via fax or email. Mr. Rivera would also be available for any questions for any applicants might have. The proposed timeline is that we would announce the vacancy and adopt this process today. And ask the application deadline for applications would be Friday, June 4th at 12:00 noon. On Tuesday, June 8th, the Board would review those applications in closed session and determine, based on its own discretion, whether or not to interview all applicants or a subset thereof. And those interviews would take place in person on Friday, June 11th, at a special called meeting in the morning. We anticipate an 8:30, 9 o'clock start time. And we would select that same day and swear in the new Regent that same day so that we might begin the onboarding process. Are there any questions about that process to fill the Regent vacancy? Is there a motion to adopt that process as presented? I'm sorry.
A quick note, Madam Chair. Under your policy, the gathering or the filing of the applications is, the policy directs that it should be with the President's Office, but that's a function that's been delegated during the pandemic to the Office of General Counsel. So I just wanted to note that. So you don't read your policy and say, wait a minute. That's why that's happening.
Thank you very much. So submitted to the President through the Office of the General Counsel.
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. If we can make that necessary change if anywhere it needs to happen. I so move. Thank you. Regent Hutchinson makes a motion to adopt. Regent Everett seconds that motion. Any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor of adopting that process as presented, raise your hand. Any opposed? Same sign. That motion is adopted. As we have already concluded our closed session earlier in the meeting, we're going to go straight to calendaring. And at our next Board meeting in June, we've just outlined those dates. Again, we are not having a July Board meeting at our regular time. We will have a special called meeting on the 27th. And then in August, we will have our regular Board meeting, the second Tuesday, as well as a special called meeting for public hearing and adoption of our budget on August 24th, if memory serves me correct. Delia, yes, she's shaking her head that I did that correctly. Any questions about our schedule for the rest of the summer? Thank you all. It's so wonderful to see those of you in person. I look forward to the opportunity to be in the same room with our remote Regents in the coming months. And with that, our meeting is adjourned at 3:41 PM. Thank you all very much.